13th, and given our invocation, will be Executive Pastor Mark Adams for First Baptist. Will you please come forward? Everyone, will you please silence your cellphones and please stand if you so choose, and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag?
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day, and we thank you for the blessing of life that we obtained from you. God, you are magnificent, and you love us, and you have proven that by sending your Son to die for our sins. And it is only through His shed blood that we even have the opportunity to come before your throne. So we thank you for that, and we honor you, and we worship you today, dear God, for who you are. Father, I pray for our city council and our mayor. I pray that they would seek your wisdom, and that you would be so blessing to give that to them, Father, as they lead our great city. Everything that we do here, Father, is for your purpose and for your good, and, Father, we pray that everything will be done in accordance with your will for the city of Beaumont. Thank you so much for these councilmen or our mayor who serve you faithfully and take of their time to do that, and we just ask that you bless their lives tremendously. I pray for our public servants, our police officers and firefighters, and everyone who works in the hospitals, people who do service in this, in this great city. I pray for them and ask that you have blessed them as well. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the great blessings that you have extended to Beaumont, Texas, and we pray that we will be good stewards of that. We pray all this by the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Adams. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Dureo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschall.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. On today, I have one proclamation, and the proclamation is the Disability Voting Rights Week proclamation. And I will begin to read it. Whereas this year, Americans with Disabilities Act celebrates the 32nd anniversary with people with disabilities and other supporters, and whereas there are over 61 million people with disabilities of all ages living in communities throughout the United States, whereas the disability community has a critical interest in policies enacted at local, state, and national levels that affect people with disabilities, young and old, in our communities. Whereas getting the disability involved in influencing public policies is essential, if these policies are to meet the real needs of people with disabilities to live in the community, and whereas voting is one way for the disability community to exert their influences at local, state, and national elections, whereas there are multiple efforts to develop state disability coalitions around the issues of voting. Whereas REVUP, which stands for Register, Educate, Vote, Use Your Power, is an effort to encourage state and local disability communities to organize voting coalitions. Now therefore, I, Robin Mouton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim the week of September 12th through the 16th, 2022, as Disability Voting Rights Week in Beaumont, and encourage all citizens to support the many dedicated groups that advocate for people with disabilities. Accordingly, the mayor has set my hand unto the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed this day, September 13th, signed Mayor Robin Mouton. And receiving it will be the Disability Voting Rights Executive Director Seth Wells with Rise Center for Independent Living. Will you please come forward and bring anyone that you have with you? Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Seth, thank you for the work that you do for the disability. Thank you. Glad you're here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. I just wanted to give a quick rundown of what we're asking for here at the Rise Center. The Rise Center is a non-residential center for persons with disabilities. We are cross-age, cross-disability, to assist them to live more accessibly, accessibly and inclusively in their own homes and their own communities. And a part of that is allowing persons with disabilities equal access to perform their civic duty. And one way we can do that, especially for persons with disabilities, we partner with REVUP out of Austin, and they've teamed with an organization called Move Texas, and there's a website called movetexas.org/register. And folks can go on to there. We don't have online voter registration in the state of Texas, but this is as close as we can get. They can go online and check their registration status. They can go online and change their address if needed, and if need be, they can fill out an application and have it mailed to them with a addressed envelope to their county clerk's office where they can then mail that in and be registered to vote. We appreciate everyone that's helped us do that. We have a longtime disability advocate in Ms. Prince who reached out to us to assist us with that, and we do this kind of work at the Rise Center every day, and we appreciate Beaumont's commitment to ensuring that all of our citizens have the ability and the accessibility to vote in our elections. So we sincerely thank you for this opportunity, and we hope to make sure that all of us have the opportunity to perform our civic duty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. At this time, I would like to recognize in the audience that we have our Assistant Chief Plunkett, also Fire Chief White, and also Judge Paul Brown. Thank you for being here today. Now is the time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light will be your indication that you're at the end of your three minutes. Also, Chief Singatary is in the back. I couldn't see you, Chief. Thank you.
Charlene Olson, 6155 RFD Road, Beaumont, Texas. She's speaking on item number three on the agenda.
First off, I've never ever done this. I've never even been, and so I'm just...
That's okay. Come to the podium.
No problem. I've never done this. So I was just wondering about the property tax. Is that going to be discussed today? The increase in the property tax? And I guess my main question about it is, since we have so much new construction going on, big houses, I live right off RFD Road, and there's like, there was nothing there when I moved in 1997, and now I have 45 houses on one side and another, I don't know, 40-something on the other, and then another development going 50 behind us. So that's going to be a big tax revenue as far as I can see, and I just wondered why, you know, the increase in taxes are important, so. That's it.
Thank you so very much for coming. We can't make any comment on it.
Okay.
But it will be discussed in item number three, and hopefully your questions will be answered then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Karen Husband, 700 North Street, Beaumont, Texas, speaking on item number one on the agenda.
Good afternoon. I'm here as a representative of United Way, but more than that, I'm here representing the people whom United Way strives to serve. Most of you are aware that United Way made an appeal to the city for $2 million from the state and local fiscal recovery program. United Way tracks a statistic that we refer to as ALIS. It stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. It represents the people of our community who are working but struggle to pay their bills. Every day, they're faced with the decision, do I put food on the table? Do I pay rent? They are one crisis short of truly a financial disaster, a medical emergency, a loss of job. These funds that the city was awarded through that program, as you know, the regulations were changed, and they could be passed on to nonprofits to benefit people of the community. We're requesting those funds, again, to serve these people who are struggling to make ends meet. Several other cities in Beaumont have done just that. They've actually actively reached out to nonprofits and made a request for them to propose the funds. The City of Austin made $14.4 million available to nonprofits. The City of Fort Worth, $35.5 million, the bulk of which was awarded to United Way for further distribution to nonprofits. Dallas County, Corpus Christi, made $1.2 million available to their United Way. Denton County, Lubbock, New Braunfels, Laredo, San Antonio. Our neighboring city of Nederland, Texas, is actively reaching out to nonprofits for just this reason. Yet the City of Beaumont is choosing not to make those funds available as part of the budget that's being voted on today. I'm here to ask you to reconsider that. It's the right thing to do. United Way stands to benefit nothing from this proposal, yet the people of your wards, those people who are in that 50% bracket, 50% of all households in Beaumont are in ALIS. They're working, but they can't pay their bills. Each one of you has representatives in your ward that fall into that category. I understand that capital projects are important. I ask you to consider the human capital, the people of this community who stand to benefit directly from these funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Gary, 545 J Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number 10 on the agenda.
Welcome, Mr. Williams. Welcome to Beaumont. Mayor Mouton, council, thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'm here today to show my support of a downtown planning and development advisory board. We, me personally, I'm speaking for myself, see this advisory board as a compliment to Beaumont and the city's designation by the Texas Historical Commission as a certified local government city. I'd also like to mention we're a Main Street community, and our downtown is designated as a National Register District. As you move forward, making a decision to form this board and appoint members, I'd like to recommend you refer to the requirements outlined in the Certified Local Government Handbook. It's my sincere wish the focus of appointing this board is for preservation purposes, economic development, promotion of our historical downtown, and design to advise new developers. I'm confident that local architects, preservationists, attorneys, realtors, accountants, and other professionals who are passionate about our downtown would love to serve on this board. I look forward to the positive outcome of this board, including the grand possibility of new preservation ordinances to protect, preserve, and develop our beautiful downtown. I'll be happy to provide a digital copy of the CLG handbook upon your request. If you have any questions or comments, I can be reached at my part-time job. I'm retired now, but I'm working at Beaumont Main Street, and I think you all know how to reach me. This is the handbook, and I'll be happy to email you a copy of it in a digital form.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Holly Peterson, 825 Norwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number two on the agenda.
Hi, council. Mayor Mouton, happy birthday, Mr. Turner.
Thank you.
It's really hard for me to come talk to y'all about this because I'm really acquainted with the issues in Beaumont, and it's part of my heart. And there's much bigger issues, but I'm here today to talk about the dog park. So just forgive me for a minute, but I put my name on this, and I got to see it through. I don't know if y'all hunt. Does anybody hunt? Mister? Oh, you did? Okay. I thought maybe Taylor. I don't hunt, but I have a bird dog, and I don't know why I got a bird dog, but I got a bird dog, and we don't hunt. And there's like an old southern saying that that dog don't hunt. The thing that's worse than that is not hunting your hunting dog. We learn that from experience, because it doesn't just mean that the plan won't work. It means the plan's going to be a disaster. She's been a disaster for like two years, like tearing up our house. And so to take care of her, we would go to like all the parks in Beaumont and just try to wear her out. And in the process, I met so many people who were doing the same thing I was doing, and many of them lived in apartments and townhomes. They had no yard, and they were doing the same thing, and they were all saying the same thing. Why don't we have a dog park at Rogers Park? Wouldn't it be nice? And I've said the same thing so many times. So, you know, I did that. I started a petition to get a dog park at Rogers Park. That was four years ago. So a lot of life has happened in four years. It's kind of been rough. We've had like natural disasters, water issues, a pandemic, economic downturn, okay? So it's kind of hard, I know, to justify something like that. But you know, what's interesting to me is that despite these difficult challenges, the interest has not waned for this. We still have people signing the petition. I still have people reach out to me all the time saying, what's the status? Where are we? And I've often asked myself, you know, why? Even if you look at national trends, 30% of people adopted a pet during the pandemic, and pet ownership is climbing, even though disposable income is declining. So you ask yourself why? And so I was thinking about it this morning, and I think I've come to a conclusion that trivial things sometimes are the things that get us through the tough things in life. So Beaumont citizens are still using their parks. They still want a dog park, and I'm here today because I started a petition four years ago, and I'm going to see it through. So I know there's a lot of things that are important in Beaumont, but this is not a false dichotomy. It's not an either/or. We can have both. And so I'm asking you guys today to please vote, and not only vote to put it in the plan and in the budget, but please, can we go ahead and fund it and get it done?
Thank you.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas, items four, five, and six on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Mr. Williams, welcome. Beaumont's a good operating city. I hope you find it interesting to keep it operating. Very good. Okay, the budget, I guess I'd like to see the revenue remain the same if the, according to the appraisal and what have you, just keep the tax rate as it is or lower it to maintain the revenue. The dog park, I believe, should be removed from the budget and given a little more study because I think it benefits a lot of people in apartments. And I know they love to have it, so I think they ought to participate a little more in the purchase of that, either raising money for the fence or have the apartment owners contribute and install the park on a city property and let the city probably support it by adding the water or anything necessary, but have other, the dog owners supply the fence. And then the garbage tax rate, I think it should remain the same and not increase, as is the water. I'd like to see that remain the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Kevin Payton, 2213 Briar Cliff, Beaumont, Texas, item number 10 on the agenda.
Well, it's a great day in Beaumont, Texas. Golly, thank you for all y'all do and welcome new city manager. My name's Kevin Payton. I'm speaking on behalf of being an individual citizen on your regular consent agenda, number 10, as far as a ad hoc steering committee for downtown Beaumont development. I'm also with Beaumont Main Street, and as you know, many of you do know, but for you to have that on the agenda, apparently not enough. I hadn't expressed it well enough. But Beaumont's Main Street is a collaborative effort between the city and individual members out there. As you guys know, we raised money to fund our half of the bargain through Dogtoberfest coming up, which I welcome everybody to attend coming up in October. But any event, if I see this on the agenda that it's necessary to create an ad hoc committee, I guess we hadn't done our job well enough. All I'm saying here is certainly reach out to us. Beaumont Main Street is prepared to do whatever within our power and our ability to further downtown Beaumont. They're passionate about it. People do it on a volunteer basis. Our members, you know, they pay us membership dues for it. They have buy-in to it. The members of your citizens within the community care about it. Beaumont downtown's important, has been for many, many years. I just encourage you to certainly pick up the phone, whatever it takes to create, if we can participate in any way on it. I just didn't see the necessity of an ad hoc committee out there on it, and apparently we're not doing a good enough job of putting our word out. So at least you know it, Beaumont Main Street's here, willing, able, and be happy to participate. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Well, Mr. City Manager, may I have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, let me say it's a pleasure to be here, and I would like to thank the city council and all of you for having trusted me to do this, and thanks for all the kind words that came from the public today. But I'd really like to ask you, though, is why? My first day is when you're approving a budget, okay? What did I do wrong? Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we want to hold a public hearing on the 2022 but access the fiscal year 2023 proposed tax rate. Chapter 26 of the Property Tax Code requires taxing units to comply with truth in taxation laws in adopting their tax rate. A public hearing is required if the proposed rate of .695 exceeds the lower of the known revenue tax rate, which is .6378, or the voter approval tax rate of .7813. The proposed tax rate exceeds the known revenue tax rate by .057 or 8.96%. A notice of proposed tax rate is required and published in a newspaper on the city website and on a television channel, if available, which it has been done on Channel 4, and in the newspaper on August 2022, in addition to being posted on the website. So Mayor, recommendation is to hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate.
Thank you. The floor is now open for the public hearing. City Clerk, will you please call?
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Oh, good afternoon, Mayor, council again, and staff. Let's see, this is a long, I've been thinking about this, to mention this to the council about the traffic light removal in downtown Beaumont. That was a real help of removing most of the traffic lights on Park and Pearl and Main Street, and I guess there were a few on Arlene Street. What I'd also like to mention is the new interstate, let's see, the construction that's going to begin sometime in the future, and we're going, it looks like we're going to have Calder and Laurel, North Street, and maybe Harrison go under the freeway. And what I'd like to see is roundabouts or traffic circles installed under the freeway where we remove the traffic lights. And that's all of my comments. Thank you.
I just want to remind the public that the public hearing is open to receive comments on the tax rate. So if your comments are related to increasing or decreasing the tax rate, that would be their appropriate time. All other comments are actually reserved for public comment at the end of the meeting.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. Welcome, new city manager to the mayor and all the council. I'm standing here because I was here the last meeting, and we were talking about the tax rate, and my concern is that the taxes for the city, I don't know if it's precipitated on or it's based on the bond rate, but there are people right now with the water, I can't even talk with this thing on, specifically as senior citizens with the tax rates going up all across the board. Are we affected by that? And I just want to know if somebody will answer that at the end or somewhere.
Thank you, Ms. Addie.
That's all I have, Mayor.
No one else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at this time, and I will call for a record I'm sorry.
There was a question posed in the public hearing. It couldn't be answered.
Okay, there was a question posed?
If you have a question, it could be the board to vote on, just for clarity. If there's an answer, it's a good answer.
Okay. Mrs. Seminoff, could you please address it?
Yeah, for your question, I think it was on senior citizens and the property tax. So the City of Beaumont offers an exemption for disabled and for seniors over 65. So those two exemptions can be filed.
Okay, thank you. So item number one calls for a record vote.
Mayor Mouton?
Yes. I'm sorry.
You're in discussion. We read the item and then we...
May I have a motion, please? I'm moving right along.
We're going to read the item first, ma'am. Do that.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all of that. Next item is council to consider an ordinance adopting a fiscal year 2023 budget by record vote. Our city charter states that the budget shall be adopted by a favorable vote of at least a majority of the city council, and the budget shall be finally adopted in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code. Should the council take no final action in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code, the budget as submitted by the city manager shall be deemed to have been finally adopted by the council. As far as an ordinance, this is an ordinance referred to as the Annual Appropriation Ordinance, adopting a budget for the fiscal period beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30 of 2023, in accordance with the Charter of the City of Beaumont, apportioning the funds of the City of Beaumont, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, and providing for several ability. This fiscal year budget was submitted to council on August 9, 2022, and reviewed during a work session on August 16, 2022, and again on August 30, 2022. And we have to read this statement in accordance with Local Government Code 102.005. This budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by $3,665,000 or 6.1%, and including in that amount, $733,540,000, there is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. So Mayor, you have submitted to you, your staff has submitted to you, a proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. a proposed budget for fiscal year 2023 for your consideration.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
I saw a move for approval.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, so this is based off a 69.5%, correct?
Yes.
All right, so the original budget we received was based off of a 68.5%. Can we discuss where the additional 1% is going?
Okay, I'll yield to Todd on that one.
So we proposed 68.5 cents in the first budget. And then council, in turn, proposed 69.5 cents at the, at that meeting for public notice. So the extra 1 cent would basically be used to reduce the deficit that was presented in the original budget.
And so by removing it down to 69.5 is only a 1, 1 cent decrease, correct?
Correct.
But we're still generating, where's my numbers here? At 69.5, it's still going to be an increase of, uh, $3.6 million of new revenue?
Compared to last year, that is correct.
I guess my big question is, if we have the opportunity to lower it to 68.5, why are we not doing that?
That rate was proposed by council?
No, I'm asking the question to the council.
Mayor? Todd, I actually guess we have the opportunity to lower it to 63 something. Is that right? If you don't want to generate any new revenue. But am I right about that?
That's correct.
But, but the reality is that our expenses continue to go up. And as we all know, I think everybody knows, I'm conservative. I'm a fiscal hawk. And, you know, last year, the tax rate was 70.5. So we're lowering the tax rate by 1 cent. Most of our city budget, as I understand it, is to pay for our employees. The biggest portion of our city operations revenue goes to pay employee salaries. And we're looking at hikes in our police. Um, the fire is going to want, fire department employees are going to want to hike after that. Uh, we're looking at giving raises across the board to our city employees. In the meantime, our expenses have gone up because of things like inflation, uh, supply chain issues, and the cost of doing business for the city has gone up. So we have these very real economic pressures on us. You know, there's two components to how much property taxes you pay. There is the tax rate, which we control. And then there is the appraised value of your property, which is done by the appraisal district. If your house did not go up in its appraisal value from last year, and we adopt the tax rate of 69.5 cents, your taxes went down. What your tax bill will go down, at least from the city's perspective, because we're lowering your tax rate. If you're, on the other hand, if your appraised value of your property went up, your, your taxes are going to go up regardless of what our tax rate is. So that, that I hope is at least an understanding for the citizens as to why it's necessary to increase our revenue a little bit because of the things I just said.
Councilmember Felschah, then Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Todd, I was looking at the minutes of last, last meeting. And, and the general fund, it said, uh, for year 2023, 145,292. Uh, total expenditures, but the general fund total revenue for fiscal year 2023 is 145,292. Total expenditures, 145,612. So my point being is we're at a deficit immediately of 300,000. Now, those numbers there, was that based on 69.5 or 68.5?
The numbers reflected in those minutes were based on 69.5.
And then on the fund balance, there's a deficit of 4.5 million. Again, that's just based on the 60, 69.5, correct? So we're, we're, we're in a deficit to begin with.
So, so the FY '23 budget shows a deficit of 320,000.
And the fund balance is dropping from 47 million to 43 million, correct? Is the estimate?
That's correct. Going from the 21 actual fund balance to the projected ending 23 fund balance. There's that drop.
I mean, my hope would be that we could drop it to 63 cents, but we know that's not reasonable. But even at 69.5, we're in, we're, there's red ink.
There's red ink. And also, we discussed it in the workshop twice about the '23 budget. Um, some numbers that aren't included in the '23 budget, and we've went over this before, are transfers to other funds. You know, normally every year, we transfer close to $2.5 million to the Transit Fund. That fund is subsidized by the General Fund. We also transfer $2.5 million to our, what we call is a capital reserve fund. That buys our fire trucks, ambulances, police vehicles, things like that. So that's funded from General Fund money, but it's transferred to Capital Reserve. We also transfer usually a million dollars a year from the General Fund to the General Liability Fund. That's where all of our claims and lawsuits are paid out of. So there's about $6 million that normally is an expense in the budget that wasn't budgeted in FY '23 because we funded those funds early in FY '22 because we had extra revenue from American Rescue Plan. Our sales tax was, was higher than what we projected. So forward-looking, we shored up those funds for next year. So even though we're only showing a deficit of $320,000 right now, it could have easily been a deficit of $6 million if those transfers were budgeted next year rather than taken care of this year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Gitts.
Todd, I was lectured roughly a year ago in May. But when I was lecturing in May, to my understanding, the tax rate, correct me if I'm wrong, was 71 cents for every hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's, um, so it's in the budget book for the last 10 years. So let me get that real quick, just to make sure. Yes, it was 71 cents for four years prior.
Okay, I've been on for a year. We, we actually went down prior to this discussion, right? What was the decrease prior to this discussion? From 71 to what?
It went to 70 and a half cents last year.
Okay, and it's still within the same year. And today, we're talking about actually going down again, correct?
That's correct.
So with that being stated, you know, I want the community to know this is the second time that we're actually talking about decreasing the taxes. And we also agreed to increase our contribution, contribution rate to the fire pension from 18% payroll to 20% payroll. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we, we voluntarily agreed to merge EMS into fire department to increase their payroll growth as well, right?
That's correct.
Our police department is currently in negotiations. It's possibly, possibly their pay can increase from where it was to now, right?
We put in the budget a 4% increase. It could, it could be more than 4%.
So just that alone, the fire and police, our public safety, that's 60% of our budget roughly, correct?
Right now, it's at 59% of the General Fund's budget.
Okay, with that being stated, it's obvious we have 40% left over to operate when it comes to streets, roads, drainage, as well as our staff, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's clearly obvious, everyone up here, I'm pretty sure is in support of public safety. But at the same time, we have to be logical with the amount of money and revenue we have when it comes to paying them. So I think that pretty much explains, we have dropped it twice. But the reality is, 60% of our budget goes to fire and police, which we feel do a great job, and we want to compensate them. But you can't keep lowering the taxes and compensate them at the same time. At some point, it's going to have to be one or the other. So I want to run that down and specify where our money in our budget actually goes. And when you're talking 60%, and I think everybody in here knows it's essential, we have fire and police. So I think it's very logical if we go too low, we can't take care of all the things we need to take care of, as well as the quality of life and other issues and things in the city of Beaumont. So I just wanted to kind of walk through that and explain why I have the stance I have as far as the tax rate on today.
Mayor, I just want to clarify one statement that Councilman Turner made. Uh, EMS was not merged into fire. EMS was moved as a division under fire. Council voted to approve nine additional firefighters from positions that were vacated from EMS. And there's been a long-term plan with staff to additionally increase fires numbers by vacating EMS positions, however, that has not occurred. So just one clarification on the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Gitts.
Todd, thank you for also pointing out that the city is planning on using our funding that we received from the American Rescue Plan, um, which unfortunately, which the United Way has made the request to receive some of that funding. And the United Way is a worthy and very good organization. But as, as you mentioned, we're plugging that into our budget to help offset what is already a deficit. Without doing that, how would that impact our budget if we didn't have that money there? And if we were giving it away to nonprofits?
Sure. So without the assistance from the American Rescue Plan funds, it would really come down to the taxpayers and to the water customer users to basically fund those deficits. We put almost $11 million of American Rescue Plan funds into water infrastructure alone. If we were to borrow $11 million, we would probably need to raise the rates by 2% to 3% to cover the debt payments on that. The rest of the money went into General Fund revenue losses. It's going towards COVID recovery. And so again, you know, if you put $10 million into the General Fund for these type of projects and had to borrow that money, for, for every $10 million you borrow, you have to raise your property tax rate 1%. So there's no other way around it. These costs would have been shifted to the taxpayers and to the water customer service users had we not been able to use them to cover our deficits.
Councilmember Duria.
Todd, if you could, for the public and the people sitting out in the audience, if you could tell what Mike was saying, if your house was appraised as the same and didn't go up, um, on a $100,000 house, how much cash money are we talking about for a year? As far as your property tax?
So if your house, say, was appraised at $100,000 last year and $100,000 this year, last year, you would have paid $705 in taxes. This year, you'd pay $695 in taxes.
Okay. And if, with our rate going from, that's going from 70 and a half to 60 and a half?
Seven, from 70 and a half to 69 and a half.
Okay, and that's all that we could control? So what we could control is actually dropping, uh, what they're going to pay on their property taxes this year, as far as what the city of Beaumont can't control?
Well, it's a product of two things, like Councilman Gitts said. It's a product of your tax rate and your appraised value. We can control the tax rate. We can't control the appraised value.
Okay, thank you.
Because the appraised value is county.
That's correct.
The appraisal district. Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. But just to clarify one thing, back to the question Councilman Mercurio had, most people's property valuation did not go down. Overall, the county is up. What, what was the number you said today?
I thought residential was 20%. Commercial was 40, average.
So overall, the appraised values from last year to this year went up 7.5%?
Oh, residential.
That's all, all property, commercial, residential.
My numbers were bad. I apologize.
Well, I would just like to say that, um, our tax rate is going down. And despite it, of it going down, we are still in the red. But you cannot operate in a new fiscal year with everything going up on the same budget that you had in a previous year. And we are still able to lower the tax rate from 70 and a half percent to 69 and a half percent. And we all are paying the same thing as everyone that's sitting out here listening. But with everything going up, operating, uh, fuel costs, um, everything across the board has gone up. And of course, I'm sure everyone has seen it in the grocery stores. Now you could just pack it out in one little tote bag. And you're, you're getting a $50, $60 bill and, and you're almost coming out with nothing. And we don't ever want to, um, raise any taxes. But I would have to say, we're lowering it and we're still in the red. So someone has to pay for it. It has to be accounted for. It's no different than what, what you do and what we all do at our homes. I mean, it's just checks and balances. And we're still able to lower it. Councilmember Duria.
Yeah, also, piggyback on what Councilman Turner was saying, it's not just fire and police. All our employees, we're going to, we have to pay them. We want to give them a rate. We have some outstanding employees work for the city of Beaumont. We want to be able to keep them. We want to pay them a competitive salary so that they don't leave and go other places. Every time you call 311 with a problem, we have to pay someone to go out and take care of that problem. And you want good people to go out there, and you want them to provide a good service. And those services cost money, and they have to be paid for. But just like the mayor said, what we can control, we're lowering. But that's all we can control. But I know everybody in here, you want good services. When you call 311, you want folks to show up and you want them to fix your, your problem, just like if you call 911. And all, all of that costs. And we want to keep our good employees here, and we have to pay them a competitive salary.
And Councilmember Duria, thank you for bringing up the point about our employees. Because our employees did not even get a raise. They got a $1,000 stipend. They didn't get across-the-board raise last year. They only got a stipend. Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Yes, and Todd, I want to thank you for clarifying because I know United Way has came up here weeks and advertised and stated what they want to do, which I know every council member up here would be in support of. But I'm glad, I want to clarify, and I'm glad you did today, on why we chose, well, why staff recommended to do what with the funding. I just don't want you guys to feel like it's ignored or not being responded to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? At this time, I will call for a record vote.
Mayor Mouton?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Gitts?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Felschah?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Neal?
No.
The motion carried. Thank you. I have the reading of item number two, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next on the agenda is, is for council to consider a resolution adopting the 2023 capital program. Uh, Article 6, Section 20 states, "The council shall, by resolution, adopt a capital program with or without amendment after the public hearing in accordance with the Texas Local Government Code." The capital program was originally submitted to council back on May 10, 2022, and also submitted to council on August 9, 2022, with the work session, and August 30, 2022. So we are asking you for a consideration of approval of a resolution. But I'd like to say before that, is, as a part of this capital plan is Parks Capital Projects, which you've been discussing. And we're requesting, and staff's requesting, that, that 1.46 million, if I'm a few dollars off, let me know, Todd, uh, for that to be approved in the budget before council to come back at a later date with some recommendations on what you'd like to see with those projects and come up with a final plan for that. And staff will go out, get dollar figures associated with that, and can come back and talk to you about it. But today, we would like for you, as you've approved the budget, but we would like to come back with you and have a discussion on those Parks Capital Projects, on what you would like to see.
Thank you. Ms. City Manager, you've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner?
Uh, the street rehabilit, the street rehabilitation. Uh, the street rehabilit, the street rehabilitation program that we have for eight million dollars. Bart, is that kind of still similar to you kind of split it up equally into wards or are we looking at kind of dedicating a little bit more to the older wards? Like where where are we at with that?
Currently, we're running uh about equal between wards across concrete and asphalt, though we are. Skewing the concrete a bit more towards the newer parts of town and asphalt towards the older parts of town. Uh, but you are correct. At some point going forward, we're gonna have to shift uh some of these funds more predominantly to those older parts.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking, because I know we talked about it before and we're at the point where we're talking about it again. And we're saying at some point, but you know, I want to make sure we can get it to a point where we do. Distribute it so that older area can kind of catch up infrastructure wise to the newer areas.
I'd like to take the new uh ward. Distribution that we just shifted those ward lines and re-figure the road miles per ward with the um. Pavement condition index rating for that, and then I could come back and and give you a recommendation on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Duria.
Bart, um, on the street rehabilitation program, I notice the majority of them are asphalt overlays. For the um citizens, can you kind of speak to the difference in pricing as far as? If we want to replace everything with concrete compared to asphalt overlays?
Well, for example, I think Washington was a thirty-three million dollar uh capital investment to to go back with concrete the length of of Washington. You're gonna get a longer lifespan out of a brand new concrete road, but you're gonna get a much higher cost. Um, also, a lot of our roads were never concrete in the in the first place. They were asphalt, uh ditched roads along the city. Um, so it would be a really large investment on those to enclose the drainage and and go to concrete on top of that.
Can you give like an estimate on what Washington would have cost if it was all asphalt or asphalt overlay?
Not off the top of my head. I could figure it out for you then.
Do we have some type of plan? Would it be feasible to have a plan to start doing? At some point, start doing our replacements with concrete oh instead of asphalt overlay anytime we're rehabbing a street?
I think you have to evaluate it on a street by street basis in terms of of what's appropriate. With the life cycle of a concrete road, often you will put the concrete road in place and then you will do. Panel repair most likely as you go along where you have failures and and spots along that road. Uh, if the base is still in good repair and the the concrete roads in in fairly decent shape, but the ride quality has gone down, it's very common. To then asphalt overlay that road because you get more bang for your buck and a good ride quality by putting that asphalt overlay on there. Instead of tearing it up and replacing the entire road to the tune of tens of millions of dollars.
What what's the difference in the life cycle between the concrete and asphalt overlay?
A good asphalt road uh with maintenance can last twenty to thirty years. Uh, concrete road will last thirty to fifty years depending on traffic conditions, etc.
If you come back with concrete, do you have to replace all the ditches have and have to be curb and gutter or can you do the concrete and still have ditching?
You can do concrete and have ditching. Um, there's there's some challenges with that. Because of the fact that you can get erosion under that that base going into the ditch, which we have on a couple of roads in the city. It's it's more common to have an asphalt road with an open ditch.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you, Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, uh, Bart, I just wanted to find out when will we have these discussions about uh the specific. Uh, the specifics of the rehabilitation program? Because um I know there are some that projects that have been for consideration. And they've been on the consideration list for quite some time, particularly in the area in the south end of Beaumont. When we talk about Carroll, Sycamore, some of those streets.
You're talking the named roads in the CIP?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Uh, last year was the first year under my tenure that we moved Fourth Street up and we funded it. Um, so that would be in y'all's hands as to whether you, you know, vote to to move one of those other projects uh for consideration up. We can take a look at it and give you our recommendation on which one of those we feel would be most important to to raise up first. But it's just purely a funding mechanism as to the funds available to do it.
Okay. And um as we were talking, as there were questions about the asphalt overlay as opposed to the concrete. How are we monitoring? Uh, I know there have been several streets that we've uh uh converted to concrete. And I know maybe thirty, sixty days after it's done, we've had some had to go in and remove panels. And many times they've remained uh in a disrepair state. For example, Helbig Road right in front of the fire station, that was concrete. But the middle, the middle portion of that road was broken up and it hadn't been repaired as of as of yet. And that was the same way on cer- certain points of Magnolia. Are we now looking at when we do these projects? What has to be done later that could cause the uh uh destruction of the new streets? Because I know that, uh, I'm not an engineer, but that tells me that destroy uh decreases the lifespan of the uh street itself.
Well, the the main thing when you do, when you engineer it is to make sure you have proper base on those roads uh to support that concrete. I'm not exactly sure why that section over by uh the fire station on Helbig failed. We do have concrete panel repair. Scheduled there, but you can have drainage problems. You can have failure of water sewer infrastructure under that roadway. And then it erodes the support under the road and then the road on top goes away, whether it's concrete or asphalt. So. It's it's oftentimes what's going on under the surface that that impacts what ends up you what you see on top of the surface.
Well, what are we doing now as far as monitoring these new newly constructed concrete surfaces? Prior to the flood, if you went down Magnolia, that's new concrete. And there were spots that water is standing and after rains now, you can see. Is that an indication of there being a failure underneath?
Water on the road could be an indication of problems with the drainage system. It could be a problem with the grading on the roadway as the water is draining along the surface of the roadway. It could be a issue with too much rainfall and it's exceeded the capacity of the drainage system and you've now backed up. That water onto the roadway. In terms of what we're doing to try to prevent failure of the roads. What we're doing is looking at the infrastructure under the road. So we're pipe bursting throughout the city to address the sanitary sewers. And we initiated in this this year's CIP program. A million dollars for inspecting and doing point repairs on the storm sewer, which we have not ever done before. And we've initiated those efforts. So uh we've also gone through and prior to. Uh, doing Fourth Street, we've gone and we've TV'd the entirety of the storm sewer along Fourth Street. And we're about done with that effort and getting the report and an effort to ensure that we don't have underground problems that impact us after we rehab the roadway.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Getz.
About the parks enhancement proposal. In terms of that one point four six million dollars compared to how much money we're looking at spending on streets, it's just a blip. But in terms of uh public concern and involvement of the parks enhancement. It's just as strong, maybe stronger as to what we're actually going to be doing with our parks. And I guess what I think we need to do is make sure that the public understands. More fully the process that we're about to talk about to spend that one point four six million dollars. You mentioned it briefly, Mr. Williams, but can you elaborate a little bit in more detail? What you're proposing as the process that we will follow for that one point four six million?
Yes, council member. There's been some discussion on the parks and the dollars associated with parks and and what the priorities are. Uh, but I don't think there's been a definitive plan put together to identify what those projects are based upon the priorities of city council. So uh we need to dis- establish what those priorities of council are. And then come back with some recommendations. One, you know, uh, we get the feedback from you, then staff will go back and get the cost estimates associated, as I said. Then um have, there's a parks advisory uh committee out there and have them review it for recommendations. Then go back to administration and myself and we'll list those projects and 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 uh bring those recommendations back to city council for you to discuss and. Hash hash through and and decide what you want to do. With that final list, then you'll you'll compile a final list of projects. It'll be done by city council. Uh, basically. Then uh administration are going to a file design process and a construction process. Of course, all of them probably won't make the cut. They won't make the cut, but you you that'll be your job to determine that list of projects. Some could be in in fiscal year twenty-three, some could be pushed to fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, but the parks, um, uh, there are some things that are gonna need to be done and just about my. Carusal um of of some of the parks. Until the future as far as the capital program, we're gonna have need to allocate more dollars for our parks.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Williams, and uh I I guess um you you kind of hit on the end of something that is my concern and and a frustration. You know, historically, our parks budget has been, in my belief, underfunded. It's difficult on the amount of money that we've been giving our parks director. To do much more than maintain the conditions of the parks, just get it cut and picked up. Much less do maintenance on equipment or buy new equipment. Uh, so with that being understood. Councilmember Turner and I embarked earlier this year on a campaign to put more money into the budget. For uh parks enhancement. And uh while Mr. Boone was the interim director, this proposed. Budget was put together, including uh an increased amount to enhance our parks. Uh, it went from about what a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to one point four six million proposal. That's a big, big jump. And uh Councilman Turner and I, we had a workshop. And we wanted to get everybody's ideas on which parks needed to be targeted first and uh what kind of improvements and. You know, we came up with a list. But even going back further than that, uh, as Ms. Peterson addressed the council earlier. She proposed this dog park at Rogers Park four years ago. And since that time, and she created a online petition that now has over twenty-eight hundred signatures of people, residents. That want to have a dog park built at Rogers Park. So I've been advocating for that for four years and I had previously told Mr. Boone. I'm gonna find it real hard to vote for any budget that does not include funding of a dog park at Rogers Park. But. As it stands right now, kind of at the eleventh hour, we've had a lot more increase. In the desire of some amenities at some of our parks in the city. Uh, not just the dog park at Rogers Park, but other things as well. I like the proposal that you're making and that Mr. Boone made to involve our parks advisory board in this process. That hasn't always been uh the case too much. And I am willing to trust in the process to believe that. We will get a dog park at Rogers Park and some of the other things that I specifically have asked for if we go through this process. As well as some of the things that Councilman Turner's asked for and some of the things that Councilman Durio's asked for. There may be other things that some of the other council members want uh that I don't even know about yet. But um I I'm willing to give this process the chance and the opportunity to succeed. Holly, we're gonna get there, okay? But uh, you know, we might just have to wait a little bit longer and tell Lemmy, I'm sorry, but we'll we'll get her a dog park eventually, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, I just wanted to take the time out and say to staff, you know, we appreciate everyone listening and like you said, the budget went from roughly a hundred thirty, a hundred forty, fifty thousand. To propose one point four million. But I also want to say that we did a workshop and the whole council. You know, we sat here literally for hours. And everybody took the time out to do something we've never done before, which was we kind of talked about visions and plans. So I mean, I think it's a huge jump. Our median age in Beaumont is roughly thirty-three. It's a family city and. I think with everything going up, it's essential, you know, we do some things because the parks don't have a fee associated. So. I think it's very important we focus on quality of life, especially with everything going up.
Also, I want to add comment that during that workshop, um, each council member had input in that workshop. To come to the conclusion of adding the one point four million dollars because. Uh, as each one of the council members have said, our parks are free amenities to our uh citizens. Uh, we do know that there's a much needed updated updating that we need to do. Um, of course, two of the parks have been in the news uh recently. Uh, as of Friday, Carroll Street Park, I got a phone call. Uh, I called the city manager. Uh, city manager instructed Parks and Rec. To go to Charlton Pollock Park to uh make sure that no one played on that playground. Because of some of the issues, uh, safety. And so we always want to make sure that we're gonna um deal with safety first before pleasure. Uh, it's a requirement uh for us to make sure that our citizens are safe when they go out there. And not only that, it's our responsibility. So, Councilmember Duria.
Well, another question for you, Bart. Um, you and I spoke about the project in South End for. Redeverting the water directly into the Nature's River. Can you speak on that a little bit for the audience?
Yes, sir. We've put in under the states or I guess it's a federal uh hazard mitigation program, but the state's managing it. We put in for forty-seven million dollar river diversion uh there in South Park. It would. Take water from around Florida or Jim Gilligan, under the pipeline corridor, under MLK and into the watershed that goes directly to the Natures. We focused on creating that outfall because there's only two major outfalls in that area right now. One goes down the Threadneedle Line through Exxon. And one goes uh down La Vaca, um, just to the outside of Exxon's property. And all the drainage pretty much in that area gets choked through those two outfalls. So to create another one to take water off. And pull water off of Hildebrandt, get it to the Nature's River would be big for us. And then we can build in future drainage projects. And continue expanding that into that South Park area, but we had to limit it at the forty-seven million because of getting a a good. A good estimate together that would rate high under the rules of that grant submission program.
And where are we in that process right now?
It's been submitted for consideration and we're waiting to hear what the results of that are.
All right. Thank you, Bart.
Councilmember Getz.
One of the items listed as a general improvement project with a price tag of five million dollars. Is the property located at five 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 Main Street. Now. The city has already spent about three million dollars, a little over three million dollars on that project. But as I understand it, we have the opportunity to get that money back and we're developed or have developed a request for proposals. If we are successful in selling that project to a reputable developer. If we are successful in selling that project to a reputable developer, that no longer becomes a liability for the city, but an asset to the city. And then that money can be plugged back into the budget for wherever we want to use it. Is that right, Mr. Semino?
Yeah, that money was transferred in from the general fund for the purchase of 555 Main. So if we do sell it, if that's what council decides to do, sell it, we can recoup that money and either leave it there for further general improvements or transfer it back to the general fund.
Okay, it could go to parks, it could go to streets, it could go wherever we want it to go. Which kind of brings me to the next part of that question. Where are we on getting that RFP out?
So the posting of the RFP will be this Thursday. And again, the purpose is to open it up to the public, not just locally, but nationwide, to whoever wants to bid and put in a proposal for that property.
We propose to have it open for how long?
We proposed, I think the return would be in February.
Okay. Say that again?
February.
February. Okay. I thought we were gonna do 60 days. You decided to?
We originally planned for that, but in looking at large sales like this and other RFPs, because we might have out of town bidders, because of the due diligence required by someone having to come in and look at the building, we felt like it would be best to kind of exhaust all options. So that's why we looked at February.
Another big ticket item on the general improvement project list is Riverfront Park Improvements. That's at 28.1 million dollars, but 90% of that's funded by FEMA. Are we gonna break ground on that this year or when?
We're projecting to go out roughly in November. We were ready to go out for bid, but we had the ability to get some money out of that BP oil spill program, 5.3 million, I think it was, Todd. So they finally came back and the state had TCQ manage how that money was to be given out. TCQ finally came back to us a few months ago and started working with us on our project, which we were going to dedicate that money towards Riverfront. And the paperwork on that was quite extensive. So we stalled the bid for Riverfront because of the requirement under that BP oil money that anything we were awarded, and no work could be done on that, you know, prior to the award. So we needed to make sure that when we bid the Riverfront work, that we were following all the rules as best we understood them that were required for this other 5 million, which would then leave us in better shape. Because as you know, instead of bringing the banks of the Riverfront Park back to where they were pre-Harvey, we decided to leave them, stabilize them where they are, and use the remainder of that money towards Colliers Ferry. So the money from BP going in here will leave us in better shape on Colliers Ferry, more money available for it. So it should be November. We go out for bid, 60 days. That should put us into early next year in '23 for construction.
The limitations that BP oil money, it had to be used for Riverfront Park or just for anything related to damage from Harvey or what?
It had to have been approved by them and they, it had to be mitigation type related. A lot of it was shoreline restoration, et cetera, so the Riverfront Bank stabilization fit into the lot, right in the sweet spot of what they were wanting the money used for.
Okay.
And just for clarification, on the Riverfront project, FEMA is funding 90%, but the Texas Department of Emergency Management's funding 7.5%, so the city match is only 2.5% on that.
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Neil.
Back to this RFP on the 555 Main. Why six months? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, again, we looked at some other RFPs nationwide, realizing we're already halfway through September. We've got the holidays coming up. It is potentially a two or three million dollar bid. We would expect out of town folks who would want to come in, tour the building. And so that's the timeline we came up with.
Six months? I mean, if somebody's interested in the project, they're gonna bid on it regardless if you give them three months or six months.
Councilmember, if I could add, it's not just for the sale of it. They have to propose a plan to renovate it, model it. So they're gonna have to get their team of engineers, their accountants, their bankers, everyone to look at their plan design. It's not just the purchase of the building. It's the renovation. What are they gonna do with it? Turn it into a hotel, a restaurant, housing? So there's a lot of work that needs to go into this and we looked at other models out of Austin and that seems to be the right time period to give, you know, speculative investors at least five to six months on a project this size.
Mayor, if I could add on to what Todd was saying too, is going back to the original idea of going out for RFPs is, and again, I guess we have different opinions on this, of course, but we're not necessarily just looking for the highest offer on the property. As Todd mentioned, we're looking for what makes sense. And part of that RFP response is, as Todd mentioned, is, you know, who is the development team? What is the development proposed? Does it contribute to what we're trying to do? Do you have financial capacity? And also, what's your time limit? So when a proposal comes in, it's not just, oh, we have an idea of what we want to do, but we don't have our plans ready or far enough along ready. Because what part of, at least our thinking for the RFP, again, is not the highest offer, but it's the best offer in terms of compatibility, but also how quickly they can get the project done. Because what we don't want to have is one more vacant building downtown. We, part of the response, part of the RFP guidelines is how quickly can you do it? And so that's the reason why we wanted to allow additional time.
Is there any way the council can change the timeline on it?
Well, it has, go ahead, Trey.
So I'll do that. If we change the timeline, it changes the RFP timeline as well. We have to backdate all of those dates to compress it. And so if we did that, then we may be putting ourselves in a position to where we'll be changing all of those dates back to kind of squish it so it would most likely fall within the holiday time period.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor for approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. City Manager may have the reading of the caption for the public hearing. I'm sorry. Item number three. Item number three, please. I'm sorry.
She's excited about the budget. Council took considering ordinance accepting the appraised role and approving the property tax rate for the tax year 2022, which is fiscal year 2023. This is an ordinance and it's accepting the certified appraisal role for the city of Beaumont. Establishing our tax rate, providing for a levy assessing and collecting of applicable taxes for the tax year 2022, which is fiscal year 2023, providing for severability and providing for repeal. This gets a little convoluted, so I'm gonna yield to Todd Semino on this and he can explain it through it, through what he's done with it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. First, let me give you some background. The Jefferson Central Appraisal District submitted the certified appraisal role on July 20th, '22 in the amount of just shy of 9.5 billion dollars. Based on that taxable value, a property tax rate of 69.5 cents per $100 evaluation for the tax year '22 or fiscal year '23 is proposed, which is one cent less than the current tax rate. The tax rate would be apportioned as 51.457 cents of evaluation going to the general fund and 18.043 cents per $100 evaluation going to the debt service fund. As required by the tax code, the tax rate consists of those two components that I've just mentioned, each of which must be approved separately by a record vote and at least 60% of the governing body must approve in favor of the ordinance. So Mayor, this item is going to have three record votes. The motion that needs to be read to start off the three record votes, I believe was given to you. It needs to be read in accordance with this verbiage to comply with state law. And I can hand this out to whoever wants to make the motion if you don't have that available.
So may I have a motion, please? We're gonna call for the motion and then whoever?
Somebody needs to read that caption, the bold print.
Whoever makes the motion.
Okay, may I have a motion?
It doesn't matter. Somebody needs to read it. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 695 per $100 evaluation, which is effectively an 8.96% increase in the tax rate. The tax rate is one cent less than the current tax rate, but is 8.96% above the 2022 no new revenue tax rate.
Okay, and we'll have a record vote on that overall rate at this time.
Thank you. May I have a second? I have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm gonna call for a record vote. Sorry, Mayor Mouton? I'm sorry. Discussion? Oh, I forgot. Any discussion?
I'd like my comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So back to the original comment I was making earlier. At the end of the day, this is an 8.9% 8.96% tax increase. So it's not like we reduce the taxes. So, thank you.
Yes, effectively speaking, on the average, it is an 8.9% tax increase.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I will now call for a record vote. Thank you.
Mayor Mouton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Felschaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Neil?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, the second record vote would be the apportionment of 51.457 cents per $100 assessed valuation to go to the general fund.
Again, this needs to be read?
No, the motion's already been made, so we just need a record vote on the apportionment to the general fund.
Thank you. I'm gonna call for a record vote.
Mayor Mouton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Felschaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Neil?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, and the final record vote on this item will be to apportion 18.043 cents per $100 assessed valuation to the debt service fund.
Thank you. I will call for a record vote.
Mayor Mouton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Felschaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Neil?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the motion carries.
Okay, the next item, Mayor.
Next item, please.
Thank you. This is for council to consider in ordinance ratifying the budgeted property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2023 budget. Couple of state sessions ago, there was some property tax relief legislation passed and part of that was to inform the citizenry of what's going on with, and putting the budget together. So Section 102.007 on the Local Government Code includes the following. Adoption of a budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. A vote under this subsection is in addition to and separate from the vote to adopt the budget or a vote to set the tax rate required by Chapter 26 of the Tax Code or other law. The current tax rate of .705 per 100 assessed will decrease by one cent for a new tax rate of .695 per $100 of assessed valuation. The budgeted revenue from property taxes is expected to be 3,665, more than fiscal year 2022. Of this amount, 733,543 is attributed to new property added to the tax roll for this year. So we are asking council for consideration of approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, I will call for a record vote.
Mayor Mouton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Felschaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Aye.
And Councilmember Neil?
Thank you. Thank you. The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council took considering ordinance amendment Section 22.05.211 of the Code of Ordinances to increase garbage rates $1.50 more per month. Council had a budget workshop in August, August 16th, and discussed the garbage collection rates, excuse me, and the need to increase those rates to maintain the required minimum fund balance per financial policies due to having and maintaining sufficient reliable equipment, operation equipment, et cetera, and to cover landfill operations on a daily basis. It was proposed that we have an increase of $1.50 per month from $20.75 to $22.25 to ensure the minimum fund balance requirement of 15% is adhered to to maintain per financial policies. So staff is recommending consideration of approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
So move for approval. Second.
I was gonna remind you to make sure you do discussion, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Getz and Council, Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
With regard to our garbage rates, our garbage and trash pickup is by far the best in the area. And, you know, those guys do incredible work. I don't have a problem with doing an increase for the garbage rates. I'm gonna have more difficulty with the water rate. But, you know, I do think that we need to acknowledge the job that Benji Williams and his department does. I don't know of any other city that you get heavy trash pickup once a week in the area. Yeah, I mean, you could put almost anything out there and they're gonna pick it up. And that's every single week. So that's incredible and appreciated. So that's my comment.
Councilmember Durio.
Yes, I guess, Todd, can you explain the part of this at the bottom where it says 15% is maintained per financial policies?
Yes, sir. We have a minimum fund balance policy on the solid waste fund, the water fund, and the general fund. It's to make sure you have enough cash reserves on hand to maintain your operations in the event of, say, maybe a hurricane, which we have frequently here. So those are industry standards and we look at benchmarks and 15% is usually the lowest minimum required to have.
That is by state law?
It's not state law. It's something that any city can set. So it's, you can choose any level of minimum required fund balance, but like I said, usually the benchmarks, industry standards are 15% minimum.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Todd, when was the last time we had an increase in our trash pickup?
Since 2008, we've had eight increases, but the last increase was in fiscal year 2022. And we also had one in fiscal year 2020.
Okay, thank you. And just, I've been in conferences at National League of Cities and just talking to other councilmembers, they were almost surprised that we do weekly trash pickups. And I just want to compliment the staff for going above and beyond what other cities are doing. I think that's a good look and I think we should take pride in striving for doing better in Beaumont.
Yeah, not only, just for the citizens' awareness, not only is this just for trash pickup, but we operate our own. but we operate our own landfill, heavily regulated by the TCEQ. So, we have high standards that have to be maintained, or they can shut that landfill down. And I've been here seventeen years, I've never remembered one day where TCEQ came in and shut down our landfill for violating any regulations. So, there's a lot of dollars that go into maintaining that landfill as well.
And Todd, does most cities contract their landfill out?
A lot of cities don't even have a landfill, so they contract out a garbage service to a private contractor.
Which is also an additional cost.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council to consider amending section twenty-two point oh two dash zero zero one water service rates and section twenty-two point zero two point zero zero two wastewater service rates of the Code of Ordinances to increase rates by six percent effective October first, two thousand twenty-two. And that ordinance is amended in chapter twenty-two, I guess I basically read it, but of ordinance of the city of Beaumont to increase wastewater rate. Effective date, provide for repeal and provide a penalty.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? Councilmember Getz?
I have received a lot of citizen complaints, concerns about how much their water bills are going up now, right now, even before this proposed rate hike takes place. And I don't know the reason that their water bills are going up. I know my water bill last month was three hundred and seventy-six dollars, but I think it had to do with a tree falling and damaging my irrigation system, I'm checking that out, but, you know, citizens are telling me they're having water bills of two hundred, three hundred dollars a month, and I'm just, I don't know what's going on. The, what with that type of a water bill, it's just a.
Increase, Councilmember Getz?
Water bills.
No, no, no. A two to three hundred dollar increase?
A two to three hundred dollar water bills, yeah. Yeah, increase from like a base rate of like ninety-something. I've had lots of emails like that. And, you know, I understand that we need to maintain a fifteen percent baseline in our revenues, and that's also for bonding, is that right, Mr. Semino?
So, as discussed in the work session on August thirtieth, we have a fifteen percent minimum fund balance requirement, and let me just explain that a little better. So, a fifteen percent fund balance requirement means fifteen percent of your annual expenditures. So, that's what you wanna have in reserve on standby. And I also talked last week, well, not last week, on August thirtieth during the work session, that I personally think we need to increase the minimum fund balance in the water fund from fifteen percent to maybe as high as twenty-five percent, and this is why. The bond rating agencies that we use when we issue water and sewer revenue bonds, they rate us on unrestricted cash and debt service coverage, and all of that basically ties to your fund balance. The numbers that they're asking for these days have changed as opposed to maybe four years ago. Their numbers are going up, which means our fund balance needs to go up. So, we're gonna need at least a minimum of twenty percent fund balance going forward to preclude having a downgrade from the rating agencies. They don't force a minimum fund balance requirement upon us, but they do look at those key metrics of unrestricted cash, debt service coverage, and water loss, and then they look at your economic outlook indicators as well.
So, we've talked about ways we can increase revenue into our water fund, and, you know, the rates that we charge our out-of-town customers and the rates that we charge our apartment owners, those are potential sources of revenue that by tweaking those amounts, we could raise more money, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. The only other thing you can do to avoid a rate increase, if you can't bring in revenue, is to decrease expenses, and we've talked about maybe slowing down, you know, the aggressiveness of which we're doing some of our capital improvement projects, and, you know, that's a slippery slope because, you know, you're finally making some progress with, you know, trying to gain traction on an older infrastructure system, so, you know, it's a dilemma. I personally would like to not see this more than a five, five percent, five percent hike, not six percent, but that's just me. What would it take to get it to five percent?
So, to get it to five percent, you're gonna need to find another four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but here's where I stand with it, and I know I'm not a council member, I don't have a vote, but I do wanna go on the record, I still recommend an eight percent increase, and the reason is, is because if we don't, right now, even with a six percent increase built into our model for FY twenty-three, we're gonna go have a one point seven million dollar deficit in FY twenty-three, that's with a six percent rate increase. I've talked about this many times, the August numbers came out just today or yesterday. Nationwide, we're at an eight point one percent inflation, it's not going down, but again, that's the CPI, that's an index over a variety of products. In the water fund, we're not buying those variety of products, we're buying pipes, we're buying chemicals, we're having increases of a hundred percent, not eight point one percent. So, if we're still going into our fund balance by one point seven million a year, we're gonna need more than six percent to satisfy the rating agencies, and if you don't satisfy them, you're gonna get a downgrade, and that cost of a higher insurance rate when we borrow money is gonna be passed on to the water customers. So, it's either you pay now, or you pay a lot more later.
That can also affect our bond rating, correct?
Well, exactly, it's going to affect our bond ratings, and we're scheduled to go out for twenty-five million dollars, probably mid FY twenty-three to continue our infrastructure improvements.
And so, your recommendation?
So, you know, considering we're gonna borrow twenty-five million dollars, and considering we have record inflation, not just eight point one percent, but in excess of fifty percent on a lot of items, we're reckon, well, I was recommending eight percent, I know it's not a popular thing to do, but again, if you don't pay it now, you're gonna pay more later, because when we, if we get a downgrade, that means you're getting a higher interest rate you have to pay back. It's just like a mortgage on a house, no one likes to pay higher interest. And so, if we do get another downgrade, the interest rate's gonna go up, it's gonna be passed on to the water customers.
Thank you. Sure.
Yes, Mayor, as you know, when we started this conversation, it was recommended by staff at eight percent, and after that happened, I went back and had conversations with staff and asked them to find savings so we could get this lower, because council had expressed this opinion that they would like to see lower rates, so we went back and looked at some things and got it to the six percent. But it is, there is some risk, as Todd told you, associated with getting to that six percent, for sure. You know, most cities don't carry a fifteen percent fund balance, you're looking twenty to twenty-five percent for sure, and it's a little bit concerning that we're at a fifteen percent fund balance requirement. I would recommend twenty-five percent, at least twenty percent, so I think we are accepting some risk by going to that number, for sure. I also asked staff to look at projects, is there some projects we can delay, not do, you know, to make up that amount of dollars, and as try as they may, we were not able to eliminate anything because there are some really critical projects that are on board for the city coming up in this next year. So, I'm as fiscally conservative as anyone up here, but I also wanna do what's best for our city in Beaumont, and I think you are taking a bit of a risk and letting your fund balances go below that, especially with bond and rating agencies, but just period if you have an emergency.
And again, just for the citizens, or the water customers, rather, you know, with the six percent rate increase that we have modeled right now, that's gonna, that would increase a residential water bill based on six thousand gallons of usage, it would raise their water bill four dollars and sixteen cents a month. If we held it at eight percent, I think it was a little over an increase of six dollars per month on their water bill. And also, I hear talk of, well, the general fund's doing great, why do you need to raise our rates on our water? Remember, the easiest way to explain it, the general fund and the water fund are two separate entities, they don't carry the same pot of cash, they're like two different companies. So, even though the general fund has a healthy fund balance, the water fund does not. So, and the general fund is supported by taxpayer dollars, property taxes. The water fund is supported by customer user fees. We don't intermingle those two revenue streams, so I just wanted, like I said, I hear that a lot, your general fund's great, don't raise my water rates, they're two separate companies, so to speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Semino, can you talk about the bond rating? So, all right, so first of all, just to clarify, one of the reasons why I voted against the budget earlier is because the tax rate's higher than what you originally recommended. Same thing on this, if you're recommending eight percent, and we're going to six percent, and we're gonna be at risk of lowering our bond rating, how long does that process take to build it back up?
At least two years.
And so, if our bond rate decreases and our rate that we borrow money at increases, how much of an increase are you thinking we're looking at on, say, a twenty-five million dollar bond?
Honestly, I'd probably have to get with our bond financial advisor on that, it depends on what the interest rate is at the time. And I just don't have that information with me, but as anyone can imagine, you know, like I said, it's just like a mortgage on your house, just a quarter percent makes a huge difference when you're financing it over twenty years.
So, all right, so one of the things I was looking at here, the discount that we give for the senior citizens, do you know how many people actually take or use that?
I could probably run a report, but offhand, I don't know how many senior citizens we have on the water customer system.
All right, 'cause one of the concerns that I keep on hearing is about the impact that this has on the senior citizens. So, is there a way to do both, where maybe we increase the gallons that we allow the senior citizens to discount, but still increase the water rate?
Yes, we, you know, we had planned on workshopping a lot of ideas to help out the water fund, that would require a change of ordinance, but I think we're gonna look at changing the ordinance anyway as it relates to multi-unit, like apartment complexes, mobile home parks, things like that. So, when we do workshop it, whenever y'all just decide you wanna have that workshop, we can talk about things like maybe possibly increasing senior citizen discounts as well.
Well.
Mayor, I have one more thing after you.
Okay. One thing I would like to recommend, that if you are a senior citizen, that the discount automatically be applied to the bill, that way they don't have to apply for it.
We have to verify whether or not they're a senior citizen or not, or everyone would be trying to take advantage of that. So, we did, you know, we discussed this, I think, last year also, to where we make it more known that seniors can apply for that discount, and I think we put it out on water bills, but now it's on the original application process too, so it's, every time we get a new customer filling out an application for water service, it's on there to notify them, hey, if you're over sixty-five, you can qualify for this ten percent discount on water and on solid waste pickup.
Okay, so maybe we need to send that out again to make sure that all citizens are taking advantage of it. We'll put it on the website and maybe get it out back in the water bills.
Right, and maybe we can get Chris Catalina's Communication Department to push that out also.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Getz?
So, Todd, our water revenue fund balance is struggling, from what you're saying, but yet you're proposing transferring how many million from the water revenue fund to the general fund?
It's over seven million.
Over seven million. So, you know, I struggle with this because you've got a water revenue fund struggling, but we're taking seven million out to go to the general fund, and I understand that if you left it there in the water revenue fund, it would be obviously much healthier than if it was removed, and, but your general fund would have to somehow shore up that loss of seven million dollars in revenue, but doggone, it sure seems like it would be easier to deal with the general fund right now, considering how healthy that is, than taking that seven million dollars out of the water revenue fund.
Well, let's explain that then, so the public understands. So, in lieu of a tax, remember, I called the water fund and the general fund each separate companies. The water fund, if it was treated as a company, it would pay sales tax, it would pay property tax, it would pay for the services that the city offers, which is legal, HR, payroll, accounting, benefits, purchasing, technology services, the list goes on and on. Just in property taxes alone, I think I told you all two weeks ago in a work session, if they were paying property taxes on four hundred and seventy million dollars of assets, they would be paying around five point two million dollars of property taxes. So, you put on top of that professional staff for legal, HR, payroll, accounting, benefits, technology services, purchasing, et cetera, it's probably well above the seven point two million dollars they pay. Another way of looking at it, if you reduce that transfer from the water fund to the general fund, that puts more of a strain on the taxpayers, that makes the taxpayer subsidize the water fund, which isn't fair, because there's a lot of customers that use water that are outside of city limits that don't pay property taxes, so you're making property tax owners pay more of their share to the water infrastructure than water customer users.
Councilmember Samuel, Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Neil?
Well, I've listened, and my concern is the impact that it's gonna have on the citizens in the end. I've listened to you, Todd, over the years, and you've always been pretty steady, and when you've explained to me, you've helped me to understand, and when I began to think about the impact that it would have on our rate, our rating, and we lose that, and you feel certain that if we were to go even with the six percent, it's gonna have an adverse impact on our rating. We can lose that rating in a year, but we would, it would take at least a couple of years to get it back, if so. And you said that the increase in the water rate at six percent would be about how much per customer?
For the average residential customer, not commercial, but residential customer that uses six thousand gallons, which our system tells us that is the average, it would increase the water sewer bill by four dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay. And should we, and should we have the adverse impact on our rating? And our rating goes down, and we have to go out with the bond sale? What would be the amount that that would be likely to impact our citizens in the increase?
Again, I'd have to consult with our financial advisor, who handles the issuance of our bonds, but it depends on the interest rate at the time, how long we're gonna borrow the funds, how much we're borrowing. So, there's a lot of factors involved, and I just don't have that information now, but. But but again, think of it as a mortgage on your house. Something as small as a quarter percent financed over twenty to thirty years can have a big big impact on your monthly payment.
And your recommendation, it's it's been presented for a six percent increase effective October one twenty-two. But you're recommending not the six percent, but the eight percent.
Makes me the bad guy, but yeah, that's.
Well, I think we, as as Councilmember Turner mentioned, as we go across the country, we've heard heard a lot of cities who are in a lot worse shape than we are fiscally. And that's because our staff. So I appreciate our Budget Department and all that you do. And sometimes you just have to be the bad guy.
Kind of a joke, kind of a joke, but honestly, I try to, I try to.
But you do have.
Please don't call me the bad guy. I actually, you know, I try to do what's best for the citizens as water users and taxpayers. And, you know, like I said, you can pay some now or you can pay a lot more later. If it was me, I would want to pay a little more, a little more now and not a lot more later. It's going to catch up.
Well, Mayor, I just, my last comment is, I've been around a while, I'm not, I'm definitely not an expert in finance. And I do tend to listen to those who I consider to be experts, those who do that on a daily basis. And you've not steered us wrong as of yet. So that's my position.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Gads.
I have to actually agree with Councilman Samuel, like the same way we yield when our legal advisor give us advice. I think at some point, you know, you don't want to get into a lane of trying to be an expert in something you're not necessarily expert in. And when we talk about communication and marketing as far as our seniors, I think this is an opportunity, I know it's great to get with HR, but it's an even better opportunity to utilize our Communications Department. That's what it was actually created for, to actually get the message out to our seniors. And not only communicated via web, we have plenty of senior citizen groups that meet throughout the community. I just was invited by Councilman Durio to a senior citizen meeting when it was almost a hundred senior citizens in that particular meeting. So I think it's important that we can physically go out and reach the senior citizen residents, what would be marketing, putting the cards in their living facilities and residence, whatever we need to do, we need to get the word out. Because constantly everyone's been stating that the seniors is affecting the most, and I agree because they have fixed income, but we got to do a better job marketing and physically get that material out to them. The internet, most seniors, don't don't feel bad at me, but most seniors not on social media to keep up with these rates and the services we offer. So we got to do a better job physically going to them to make sure they understand the services that we have to provide for them.
Thank you, Councilmember Gads.
Todd, I just want to thank you for the work that you did to get it down to six percent. And I know that you had to look behind every rock and crevice to do that, so thank you.
Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So claims paid for that are associated with the water and sewer fund, those are paid for out of the general fund, correct?
Comes out of my money. I have I have a claims fund, it comes out of my money.
Okay, but it's not, it's not associated with the water fund?
No.
Okay, so a portion of, another way to look at it, a portion of the seven million dollars that we transferred back in helps reimburse the general fund for claims that are paid out.
Actually, if I could clarify, so we have a general liability fund where claims are paid out of. It's normally funded by transfers from the general fund, the water fund, and the solid waste fund. We did do a transfer this year to the general liability fund because it has no revenues of its own, so it has to be funded by the water fund, solid waste fund, and the general fund. In the past, we've transferred money from those three funds into the general liability fund. We didn't do it this year or next year because those two funds simply don't have the money. Also, we transfer funds to the employee benefits fund, which is where we fund all of our insurance costs and claims. That fund needed money also, I think about four and a half million dollars from the general fund. Normally, the solid waste fund and the water fund contribute to that fund as well when needed. They weren't asked to contribute this time either because their fund balance didn't have it. So I've already done everything I can to alleviate the solid waste fund and the water fund of all these transfers we're talking about. The only one I didn't alleviate was the payment in lieu of taxes to the general fund because, again, I don't think it's fair for the taxpayers to subsidize water use for people who aren't paying property taxes.
Okay, Councilmember Durio.
Quick quick question, Todd, what exactly do the seniors who are not getting that ten percent discount, what do they have to show to prove that they's over sixty-five?
Probably any kind of identification, driver's license, other type of identification that just shows their date of birth.
So they just need to come up here and provide that?
Correct, they can get with the Water Customer Service Department here on the first floor.
All right, thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
So seniors, that that's that's one thing right there, so the seniors have to physically come up here? I think that's another tough one because, I mean, we got seniors that are, you know, eighty-five and up there and they don't move as mobile in age, so is it another option?
They can, they can do it online, a lot of seniors that we might be talking about don't don't have the capability or the technology to scan those documents in and send them to the Water Customer Service Division, but they can do it via email or or walk up.
Well, I'm going to get to you. One one thing I would like to say to everyone in the audience that's viewing, the services have to be paid for. And no one want to, I mean, you don't want to increase, but water has to be paid for, trash pickup has to be paid for. And we're debating and going back and forth, I've been looking at the at the clock and we've been going right now twenty-two minutes on a subject that has to be paid for. Our chief financial advisor and officer is stating he's recommending an eight percent increase. But we're settling for a six percent increase, which is not going to cover it. We already know if we do it, we're going to have to pay the cost. And we're going to pay the cost on the latter end of it, and it's going to cost us more. And at some point, I always say, count the costs, and you have to count the costs. And Todd, thank you for your explanation, thank you for the work. I mean, it's it's that plain and simple, it has to be paid for. The services, either we cut some of the services or you have to pay for it, we all have to pay for it. And I'm saying we, us citizens, we all have to pay for it. Councilmember Samuel.
Well, I think initially, Todd, your recommendation was eight percent. And we chose to ask for the six percent. This is a time that I believe we have to do what we feel is fiscally prudent. And I'm going on the advice of of you and your staff. And I'm going to ask, I'm going to amend my motion rather than the six percent, I'm amending my motion to go with the eight percent.
I'm sorry, Councilman Felschall made the motion, I believe, and and you were the second.
Oh, okay, well, I withdraw my withdrawal.
It's your motion.
It's your motion, you have to amend it.
No, you don't, you don't have to do anything, you've got a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
Can I withdraw my second?
Yes.
I withdraw my second.
I'll second it.
You going to make the motion?
So I don't.
Councilmember Felschall's motion.
There's a motion on the floor that has to be dealt with.
Okay.
Move to properly second it, you can call for a vote.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay. The motion?
Failed.
Failed.
I so move to approve with the eight percent increase on item six.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to change the increase from six percent to eight percent. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, because it's a new motion, it does require new discussion.
New discussion.
And I believe Councilman Durio has appointed.
I just want to, Todd, to repeat what the average increase in the bill will be at eight percent.
At eight percent, instead of an increase of four dollars and sixteen cents, it was slightly over six dollars a month.
And the the cuts, or whatever you had found to get it down to six percent, if we go at eight percent, what happens to those, are they still cut or?
So what happened is, the time of that discussion, I was asked to look at possibly cuts or ways to find a lower increase. And so we had just gotten our July billing numbers for water, and they were, they were more optimistic than the June numbers. And so I increased the projected revenue based off of the July billings, extrapolated it going forward, and so it produced more revenue for the next year. And so I was able to lower the increase from eight percent to six percent based off of the new revenue projections. So there really wasn't any cuts that were found. It was that we had, just like here in a couple of weeks, we'll we'll have, you know, the next, the next month's billing numbers to look at. So they could go down, they could go up, I don't know yet. So basically, all that was based off of July revenues that were better than what we had anticipated.
But those revenue increases, they didn't help with your projections for the drop in the bond rate, you know, if if we don't, if we don't strengthen this fund?
No, unfortunately, like I said in the workshop two weeks ago, the last time, you know, we went out for a bond refinancing was in February of twenty-two. And at that time, they looked at audited statements from fiscal year twenty. So I imagine this time when we go out for a revenue bond, they're going to want to look at audited statements again. The only ones we'll have available will be from fiscal year twenty-one. So, and I looked at those numbers, I looked at the metrics that they weigh them against, and both of those metrics decreased from the last time we've had a bond rating. So I'm afraid the ratings might already be in the works. But when I have my rating calls with with the rating agencies, they're going to ask me, what are you doing to increase your unrestricted cash? What are you doing to increase your debt service coverage? And so I told y'all, my answers are going to depend on what y'all do here today. So when when I do have the next bond rating call with them, I'm going to tell them, hey, we passed an eight percent increase. We haven't done that since two thousand and eight. You know, our our rate increases average between five and eight percent. So it's one of the highest rate increases we've had, and, you know, depending on what we're going to do in the workshop, you know, finding other ways to increase our revenue stream also. So they'll take all of those things into consideration, even though some of the metrics they're going to evaluate us on are already in the books, so to speak. So the economic forecast will will weigh on their decision in the next bond rating.
So do you see anything in your CFO crystal ball coming in the future that might be able to supplement this fund to make it healthier?
Everything was hard to predict during COVID, sales tax, water revenue bonds, because people live differently. So now that we're coming out of the pandemic, so to speak, people are getting back to a regular routine. For whatever reason, we saw a huge decrease in sewer consumption during COVID. And I'm not sure if that related to refinery shutdowns or stalls in their work product or what. But we're hoping that, in my CFO crystal ball, that consumption returns back to pre-COVID usage. In other words, people will start using more water, our commercial businesses use more water, our refineries use more water. If we can increase consumption alone, we don't need a rate increase. So hopefully, next year, we won't need a rate increase at all.
But either way it go, increase in consumption or this eight percent, it all falls back on a taxpayer and it's like you said, pay now or pay later?
Not on the taxpayer, but on the water user.
Water, water, water customer.
Right.
Last question, I just wanted to put you on the spot, Mr. New City Manager, and and see what you think about it. Cut your mic off.
Thank you for putting me on the spot. Just a few comments, I guess, before I say that. I guess part of the bottom line is you're providing a service that you're not charging enough to recover your cost. You're you're, it's costing you more to provide the service and your fund balance is going down, and you are funding it through your fund balance, and you're just not providing, charging enough for that service. So that hints you're going to go down and your fund balance is going to continue to drop. You know, it's kind of part of our overall financial situation. Our net value as a city dropped ten million dollars from the last audit. And that gives you a general opinion of state of your city's financial condition. So we're doing some things that basically, our expenses, what we're spending is outpacing your revenues. So this is just one instance of that happening to you as a city, as a as a whole. You know, senior rates, you you talked about senior rates, we need to evaluate that, what we're doing. I think there's a genuine concern here about the seniors and what we're doing, that's what I hear from from all of you. So I'll get stuff and we'll evaluate our program, what we're doing with seniors and how we're educating them, how we're getting them out to participate. If there's a possibility, we can do something special with them with their rates at some point. We we need to evaluate that and get that done for sure. Also, I'd like, and I'll talk with Todd, we need to do five-year projections on our rates rather than a yearly projection. It helps you plan much better, it helps you absorb the large increases or small, all small increases and be able to balance them out over a period of time. So we we need to look at that, we need to look at a five-year projection on our rates, and it helps you plan as a board much better than every year sitting there trying to hash through that. And you have more flexibility to adjust that every year as you go through for for that. But again, I I physically, I don't like it, but I think financially, it's a good move. You're going to need some for whether six or eight percent, I would recommend you increase your rates. Otherwise, you're putting your enterprise fund, water fund, in a in a compromised situation.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, so when you mentioned your fear, and particularly as we go out for the bonds, you said you would expect to get that call, what are we doing? And you said your your response is going to be based on what was done in, you said, nineteen? Twenty nineteen?
So no, so, two things, so I think the rating, however the bond rating goes in fiscal year twenty-three, I think the rating is already in the books. In other words, they're going to want to look at. In other words, they're gonna wanna look at audited financial statements. We're, we haven't closed fiscal year twenty-two yet, and it's usually not gonna be closed till March of twenty-three. We'll probably issue bonds before March of twenty-three, so they're gonna wanna look at fiscal year twenty-one numbers. Those are already in the books. So, my fear is there might already be the possibility of a downgrade in the works. But, my phone call with them, when they ask me, what are you doing to correct your situation, to improve your unrestricted cash, improve your debt service coverage? Those answers are going to be depending on what y'all decided today, and what we decide in the workshop to come, maybe next month or, or the next few months. As far as, um, you know, we did the rate increase of eight percent, we're gonna look at, you know, the apartment complexes, um, prison systems, you know, things like that. There's several, there's several ideas we had in the works to increase revenues and decrease expenses. Another one was, you know, going to a different credit card company where the user fees for paying, paying your bills online are passed on to the consumer rather than the city. Right now, the city pays about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of credit card fees because people like to pay their bills online. Most other, other entities pass that user charge on to the customer, and we're gonna start doing that as well.
And you, you believe that twenty-two, even though twenty-two is not, the books are not closed on twenty-two yet, you believe twenty-two is better than twenty-one?
I'm hoping so, especially with, um, with this rate increase. Of course, that's not gonna be effective till FY twenty-three, but, yeah, hopefully, the metrics in the audit for FY twenty-two are better than FY twenty-one.
And the reason I'm going, I'm, I'm going down that line, so that, just like we make decisions today, uh, we'll have the opportunity to make decisions again next year, and, uh, should things be better, we can always come back and reduce. But, as of right now, we're at a point, a critical decision has to be made. Is that proper? Is that the way I'm, am I understanding that?
In my estimation, that's correct. Like I said, we received a slight downgrade in February of twenty-two. And I told y'all, it would take at least two years to restore order in your fund balance, and I believe we're starting that process today. So, it'll be another two years from today.
Okay, Councilmember Neil, then Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Gitts.
I guess my concern is, is that prior to having the workshop and coming up with other ideas to, coming up to ideas of how to pass this cost on to, uh, other people besides just the residents of Beaumont, we're just immediately going to this big eight percent increase when we haven't looked at the apartment complexes yet, or the out-of-town people, uh, or out-of-area, um, people that are buying the water. And I just struggle, you know, eight percent increase, that's a big increase. Have we ever had an eight percent increase before?
Like I said, I, we had one back in two thousand and eight, was eight percent. And remember, this, this eight percent increase isn't the answer, it's not the fix-all to everything, we're still gonna have a deficit, right?
That was my next question.
So, we have to look at those other options that we're talking about with the apartment complexes, the out-of-city limit rates, things like that, the credit card fees. We have to do other things in conjunction with this increase to fix the situation. The rate increase isn't gonna do it alone.
So, how does, once you move, if this moves to eight percent, how does that compare to other like cities around this area?
So, we had a slide, um, show for y'all in one of our budget workshops. But I can, I can read this off to you. Of course, I think this one that I'm going to read is based off of the four percent, I'm sorry, the six percent increase, but Waco, and these are all on residential customers with six thousand gallons of usage. Waco's average bill was ninety-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Orange was eighty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Port Arthur was seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Tyler was fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Abilene, sixty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. Groves, fifty-three, sixty. Nederland, fifty-six, eighty. And our current, um, bill is sixty-nine, seventy-two. So, we're kind of in the mix, and what we try to look at is cities comparable to our size and water customer base.
Sixty-nine, seventy-two is what it is right now.
That's, that's what it is right now, and so, I believe in your memo, it's going to go, based off six percent, it's going to go to seventy-three, eighty-eight. But, within eight percent, instead of seventy-three, eighty-eight, the average water bill should be about seventy-five dollars and thirty cents per month.
Yes, but when you look at cities like Groves and, and Nederland, that doesn't have the population that we have.
They don't. We, we included those two because they're immediately in our area.
Well, but even with that, we're, we're still only paying sixteen dollars a month more.
Right.
And we have, I mean, their population is nowhere near ours.
Yeah, and, and Orange and Port Arthur, we're under both of those, those are. Waco's a lot further away, but they're the highest.
So, again, like our city manager said, we're providing a service that we can't compensate for the dollars. Uh, Councilmember, you're finished, Councilmember Neil?
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Taylor, then Councilmember Gitts.
Councilmember Taylor.
Councilmember Turner.
Yeah.
I know.
Well, my concern is, obviously, you know, long-term, and my hopes is, with what we're doing today, along with the workshop, to figure out ways we can increase outside, instead of our grade going down, we can look in the future to our grade going up. So, the actual interest that we're paying long-term, we can look at a lower interest rate than the higher interest rate. Uh, I know it, it may look good to say takeaway now, and we'll figure it out later, but I think us operating that way is putting us in a further deficit. And I don't think that's like a smart way to operate, especially when you have the CEO, CFO telling us what we're up against. So, and, and my hopes, long-term, we can look two years from now, instead of us saying it's a possibility we can go down as far as the interest rate, because we're gonna always need to borrow money to fix roads, trees, drainage. I'm looking to go lower in the long-term interest rate. So, I thank you for your evaluation, Todd, and even with this, this still isn't enough. So, I do want us to still take advantage of other ways to increase the revenue, or hopefully, like you said, next year, we're at a point where we won't have to do anything at all.
Yeah, and, you know, we borrow money by issuing bonds every eighteen to twenty-four months, so it's not like a one-time thing and we're done. It's, it's cyclical, it happens every eighteen to twenty-four months.
Councilmember Gitts.
Todd, have we ever lowered our water rates?
I don't think we've ever lowered our, uh, water rates.
I don't think we have either.
It's, it's, that would be extremely hard to do because we have a stagnant customer base. If we were a growing city and growing our, our water customer base, we wouldn't need to raise rates.
Okay. Uh, it's just, I just wanted to put that out there because it was, so, I think somewhere mentioned that maybe in the future, we could lower our water rates. I don't think that's ever happened, certainly not while I've been on council. The other thing I wanted to ask you, and to make sure I understood you correctly, is that whether we increase the water rates six percent or eight percent, your belief is that it's already in the books with the bonding companies based on what our fund balance is right now. Uh, that six percent or eight percent's not really gonna be the factor that decides whether or not they're gonna downgrade our bond. It's gonna be based on our fund balance and where we are right now. Is that correct? Do I understand you correct on that?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. I think they're probably going to look at the audited FY twenty-one statements. Sometimes they'll like to look at some pro forma statements that we have that aren't audited. Sometimes they don't. It just depends on which, um, which reviewer we have, with standards and poor, and how they conduct their interview.
So, I guess that kind of goes to the next point. Six percent, eight percent, we're probably gonna get a bond rating decrease based on things that they already have to look at. So, if that's a given, you could still go to them and say, well, look, when you get that bond call, you know, we recommended a six percent rate hike, we are making sure that, uh, apartment dwellers are paying more of their money. We're making, uh, sure that out-of-town water users are, uh, paying more in, in their fair share. These are all strategies that you can, uh, give to the bond rating companies when you get that bond call, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right.
But again, remember, I've not done this before, I've not tried to increase our bond ratings before, but just from a math standpoint and fiscal standpoint, it's gonna take at least two years if we do get a downgrade to increase it, because that's, it's gonna take that long to build your fund balance back up. And eve- like I said, even with an eight percent increase, they're gonna look at our budget also for FY twenty-three. And as it stands right now, they're gonna say you have a one-point-seven million dollar deficit. With an eight percent increase, it will go just below a million dollar deficit. So, you got, I mean, we gotta do something to start addressing that now.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
No.
The motion carry. Thank you. May I have the reading of item number seven, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll just read it, and then I'll defer to the city attorney. This is Consider An Artness Denying Energy Texas Incorporated's application to implement rate schedule utility on distributed generation, UODG, filed with the city on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Mayor, Council, Energy has submitted an application to promote a new program, the Power Through Program, which will install gas field or fire generators, um, in a range that'll be suitable for the business, a hundred kilowatt to ten, um, megawatts to commercial and industrial, industrial customers. Um, what that would allow them to do is, in the event of a power surge or a power outage, those businesses would not lose power and will act as almost a backup system for customers in the area. Um, Energy has requested that we deny their request so that it can be heard by the Public Utilities Commission of Texas, along with their already proposed tax rate increase, and we are recommending approval of the denial.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number eight, please?
Council, consider a resolution approving multiple contracts for purchase of traffic marking materials. Bids were, were requested for annual contracts to supply signage, sound materials, hardware, specialty paints, traffic control materials, and thermoplastic materials for use by first, various divisions within the public works. And basically, you have those bids for consideration. And if Bart would like to add something, this is your item.
We do this yearly, um, they estimate or give a estimated quantity, but what this does is set unit prices for the various items, and then we purchase what's needed during the year, um, according to our needs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Hey, Bart, I know it says we sent it out to eighteen people to bid on, and I know this item, sections one through four only had one company bid on it. Is it like standard, is it like a lack of people who actually do this? But, cause you know, I mean, we can't really compare it to nothing because only one group bid it on one through four.
Some of the items are more specialty items, and that, we only had one person respond on, on those. So, hopefully, you're gonna talk to, uh, in the next item, uh, E-Bid, and, and doing some changes, and that might allow us to get a little more wider net on these bids going forward.
Okay, yeah, cause it's been kind of a consistent issue throughout the year with bids, you know? I wanna make sure we get the best.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dario.
Bart, are these prices affected by the current inflation? As far as, how much have they gone up since the last time we did this contract?
I didn't look at what they went up for, I don't have that number in front of me.
The memo.
Hazard to guess that it's yes.
Yeah, the memo actually was great on this one, it reflects only a two percent increase. And also, just remember, these are estimates. I think the last time we did this last year, we don't really spend near this amount of money on here. It's, we have to price out every item and every section as if it was gonna be used, though.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carry. May I have the reading of item number eight, please?
Council, consider a resolution approving the rules for the electronic receipt of bids or proposals. This is kind of in response to, uh, some discussions held with council about bids and bidding process. Um, this will help with, uh, rectify that and, and increase responses and tracking. It also, um, helps the bid itself, you know, before they're submitted, they know that their, uh, document's not complete. So, before it can be submitted electronically, it lets them know it's complete as a document. So, if, uh, Todd would like to add anything?
No, I'd just like to, uh, say, we're all looking forward to this product. We know how many times, you know, council has asked why a bid wasn't awarded, and a lot of times, it's something as sig- as simple as a signature. You know, the bid becomes a contract, so if they don't sign it, we can't accept it. So, having all of this going electronic, it will inform each bidder if their, if their bid is technically, um, meeting all of our specs or not, and it will tell them, it, it basically won't let them submit it unless it meets approval. So, we should have no more cases of, you know, showing a bid to you guys but saying it didn't meet specifications because of things like a missing signature.
And I, I'll just like to add that Todd hit the nail on the head, but there are, been several times when we've had to tell council that we couldn't accept a bid because it was either incomplete for either lack of following instructions for fields that were required. And so, having an electronic system that won't allow the user to move to a different screen until the required fields are completed will reduce that significantly. Um, this will also be a good savings to the city, cause sometimes we do have to reject the lowest bid because it wasn't done properly. And so, it's hot echo, this will be a, a big help in, in eliminating some of those issues.
Thank you for that explanation. Okay. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the council adopt the resolution approving the rules for the electronic receipt of bids or proposals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I'm sorry, Mayor, maybe I missed item eight. Did we have a motion and second on that one? I don't think we did. I was looking at the wrong one.
Did you have a motion and a second?
No, we didn't.
China City.
No, we didn't. After I looked at them, like, we, no.
I asked, I, I did, I asked her, she said, I'm good, okay.
No, we didn't.
Let me redo that one.
I was looking at seven.
Y'all voted to approve it, but there was no proper motion and a second.
Yes, sorry. On item number eight?
Yes. I move to approve, item number eight.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. So, item number nine, please.
Okay.
May I have the reading?
I thought we just did nine.
We're on ten now.
Ten?
Ten. It's long, Jay, let's go.
Okay.
This has been a good.
It's long. Okay, item number ten, please.
Okay, Council, consider a resolution authorizing the creation of an ad hoc downtown planning and development advisory committee to advise and act as a steering committee for planning and development efforts in downtown Beaumont. And I'm going to defer to Mr. Chris Boone, who's gonna discuss this item.
And so, thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, proposed before you again is, uh, we are requesting an ad hoc downtown planning and development advisory committee. Uh, the purpose of this ad hoc committee is to essentially act as a steering committee for, um, a new renewed effort uh, to come up with a revised plan for downtown Beaumont. I know we've had a lot of discussion here today about, um, five-five-five main, Riverfront Park coming back online. Um, but we have not had, we have not had a downtown plan proper in over a decade. back online, but we have not had, we have not had a downtown plan proper in over a decade. And so we are embarking on that effort here in the coming months. And so this ad hoc committee would be a steering committee for that effort. Again, the plan is to ask or requesting that you go ahead and establish the committee as outlined, and the plan would be to present a proposed slate of members to the mayor and council, and then, of course, y'all would be able to select or add at your discretion.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number 10. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, a couple, couple of questions, comments, concerns that I have. One, if you go back, and I think I sent you the ordinance that I was reading last night, where it clearly kind of outlays or outlines how we form a committee or how we form a different board, and a couple of different things. One, I think we clearly need some, some wording in here that it's going to follow that ordinance that we have already previously passed. And then I would like to see some wording in here that it helps define the type of people that we're going to put on this board, so that we are, we need to put people on here that understand downtown or community type development, so that you have the architects and the engineers and property planners and, and people that understand the finances behind it. This is not a type of committee that if we really want it to be productive, that we just need to fill with friends and family.
Glad you said that. I'm glad you said that.
The, the other thing that I'd like to point out, this one right here, and right now it says the mayor gets three appointments and the council gets one, and while I would prefer to give you all the appointments, Mayor, if we could, the problem is, is per the ordinance, it says that you can only have one more than the council. With that being said, it also states that it needs to be a odd number, which means that each person, including the mayor, would only get one if I read between the lines correctly. So I just wanted to have a discussion on that.
I got a question.
Councilmember Turner.
I, I actually agree with it being outlined to the speci, the specifications of people who actually understand what we need to do. I was on the lines with that when Chris read it. I think he said he was going to submit a proposed list, and we can either add or withdraw. But even with the presidents of boards and how they were formed, Chris, what did you go off of with this particular board? Per, per what other boards? How did you come up with this number?
Sure. So the, and just to clarify, in the code of ordinances, we do, it is outlined basically how boards and commissions are to be established by the council, and it's, it's pretty clear cut. What is proposed here is not a board or commission, but is an ad hoc committee. And the way it was, the way it was defined is, I kind of took a model that we used back in 2009 for an ad hoc committee there, and that's actually where I got the three for the mayor and the one for each. So that was the model that we used to come up with this. And again, it's an ad hoc committee because it doesn't necessarily have any power that a board or commission might have, and the idea is it's, it's temporary in nature. So it's the steering committee for this planning effort. Now, coming out of the planning effort, we may want to come up with a new commissioner board, but that would be later on down the road. This is temporary to be a steering committee. You know, having said that, if you want to come up with a different composition, of course, that's up to the council.
All right. My second question is, just to make sure we are in compliance, do we currently have boards and committees that are operating to these numbers, and we aren't compliant with our own ordinance? Because we're saying some were created in 2009. So are we, are we currently operating that way?
Yeah, again, just to clarify, the, the city ordinance spells out how a formal board or commission is supposed to be set up, okay? But this is not a board or commission, this is an ad hoc committee. So it's a little bit more informal. I think it's an important committee that we're recommending. They're going to do important work, I think, as a steering committee, but it's, it's not a formal board or commission. And as you look at that chapter in the ordinance, I mean, it talks about two years and terms and all that, and, and this, again, is, is a little bit different. So it's, it's, again, it's, it's styled on that 2009 ad hoc committee we set back, back then.
So the question is, no, we don't currently have boards and committees that we aren't per ordinance?
All of our boards and commissions are operating in compliance with our ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure.
What Mr. Boone is trying to express is that this particular committee wouldn't be bound by those ordinance restrictions unless the will of the council intended that it be done that way. And so for an ad hoc committee, there are some, I guess, leeways in terms of that. So if the council wanted to structure, as Councilman Neal has said, to add some additional restrictions or reformulate that committee, you can, but as it stands, as the way that it's been presented, it is not in compliance.
Yeah. And just lastly.
Let me rephrase that. It is in compliance.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't, it wasn't any confusion if we're compliant or not. And lastly, and we're talking about committee and appointees, I know two of us, myself and Mr. Philshar, we're both at Lawrence, and just like the mayor, we represent the entire community of Beaumont, you know, not, not just the ward. So when we talk about numbers and evening out, if you do, I just have a suggestion. If we do say, okay, instead of the mayor getting three, that Lawrence get two, but the mayor is the one who makes the appointment, who's the committee chair, that just can be a sacrifice to balance it out a little bit, so it's not like that. But the reality is, just like the mayor, myself and Councilmember Philshar, we represent the entire city as well.
Councilmember Philshar.
I do understand the ad hoc, but I would encourage the council to follow the recommendations or concerns of Councilman Neal. If and when we do appoint people, we just follow his thought and keep in the spirit of what he said to make sure that we get the right kind of people on this committee. Thank you, Mayor.
So you guys do have a committee, like the Convictors Bureau, and I think some of our other, or commissions or boards, like the Construction Board, that does call for specific placements of individuals?
Historical landmarks.
Yes, correct. So there are a couple that call for that. It's of, if council identified what they believe to be those positions they felt like was necessary, that would be something that could be incorporated.
And Mayor, I'd just like to add on to that regarding the, and I understand the wisdom behind a lot of that, and I think there is wisdom to it. I do know that with some of the committees, like landmarks, sometimes if there's a position that calls for a historian or an architect, sometimes we may not, it may be difficult to find somebody who's willing to serve from year to year. I mean, most of the time, it's not an issue. And so I would only ask, and I, and I will say, I don't want to get into the names of the draft, but the list that we've kind of, early draft is heavily, it is heavily weighted towards folks who own property downtown, who are develop, developers, are interested in developing downtown. So that was, that was the only thing, is to caution, is I think there's wisdom in trying to have different expertise or different representation, but we would, I would encourage to at least consider, you know, kind of heavily weighting it towards folks who actually have invested or are invested, or we expect might invest in downtown.
Yes, sir. Councilmember, Mayor Protim Durio.
So, Sheree, we can approve this item today and then come back at a later time and set, set up, and set up how we want it set up as far as what Councilman Neal was saying? Or do we have to do all that before we approve the item?
So there are some stipulations attached to this that weren't, we, we had an idea to kind of launch this effective October 1st, if that's correct, Grace?
Yeah, let me, let me just add a little twist to this. This is a.
A condition of, and, this is a condition, I was trying to move that.
Yeah.
This is a condition of the addendum that we did for Main Street, and I believe that the, the effective date is October 1st, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. So I'll go ahead and read the condition. Form an advisory committee empowered with the purpose of formulating a long-term master plan for the revitalization of downtown Beaumont no later than October 31st, 2022. So it, this would help to comply with that condition of the sale of 555 Main.
So is Main Street, they was talking earlier, are they already this committee?
No. So this would, this would not impact what Beaumont Main Street does. This is something separate that we are trying to satisfy as a condition of an agreement that we have our contract with sale. So this, this is not to compete with them, but to just satisfy that agreement. And so if you guys, if it was the will of the council to approve it, then you would have, you would see this issue come back again next week with some, I guess, recommendations for the council. So if you wanted to, to vote, then we would have to amend it. If you table it, we'd have to come back relatively quickly to get this done.
Well, we have to do, like on the other committees, we have to approve the committee members. Will we do that also?
No, sir. We, the way we did handle it in the past and the way it was envisioned here is you establish the number and how the number's appointed, but we do all that administratively. Again, it's the discretion of the council. If you want to do it differently, you could.
Yeah, so in, in the past, committee, committee members have been done administratively and just been approved by council as a, a half, as Mr. Boone said, but when you, you see those coming before you for boards, those are your appointments. So those are listed on agenda. This wouldn't fall under that.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Councilmember Gittes.
So when Ms. Gary was addressing council, she was referencing a, a book that had some criteria in there that talked about the appointment of these types of positions. Are you familiar with that, Mr. Boone?
Yes, so the Texas Historical Commission has a certified local government program of which we're comply with, but this would not be in conflict with that.
Would it be in line with that, though?
I think so, and again, it's going to be up to the council, but in the proposed draft was to include someone from Main Street, not just perhaps some current, current members of Main Street, but also perhaps some staff members. So we, we do want to have some overlap with Main Street.
And is it necessary to comply with the ordinances that people on this committee reside within the city limits of Beaumont?
It's at, it's not required, again, as an ad hoc committee, but that would be at the discretion of the council if you wanted to make that a requirement.
So none of the traditional board and commission restrictions or regulations apply to ad hoc committee unless the council chooses to apply them.
Is that something that we should consider today, or would that be sometime in the future?
So, again, we want to have this committee, we want to be in compliance by October 1st. So if you didn't consider it today, you'd have to consider it next Tuesday.
October 31st.
I'm sorry, October 31st. 31st. So we have some time.
Because we have some time.
Councilmember Neal.
Thank you. I guess the, the big question is, are we just forming this thing to appease Tom Flanagan and the, the deed restrictions on the property? Because my thought process is that we have an opportunity to form a good committee, a good solid committee, and actually make progress down here.
Well, yeah.
So these restrictions, if we have the opportunity to add these restrictions, then I think now's the time.
And just to be clear, there are no restrictions put on by the seller of the property, just that it be done by a certain time period. So I don't, I don't know that there's any, there were any restrictions other than that, just a time period to make sure that it was done in a timely manner. So I don't, I don't think it's to appease them directly, it's meant to.
Councilmember Turner.
We all voted, and I can speak for myself, I'm doing this because I know this is the best interest for the city of Beaumont, and I'm pretty sure every council member up here that voted that way feels the same. So I just want to make sure we put it out there, because I understand what you're saying, but it's bigger than tongue. We're talking about something that could be life-changing for generations when we no longer on this earth. So I want to make sure we get an invested interest from the community and make sure we get it right.
I agree, and I think that we need to put the right people on there, like we've all said.
Well, and since, I mean, we have a lot of conversation about putting the right people. I just believe that every council member here, including myself as mayor, you always want to put the right people on the committee, and just keep that in mind when you're picking your committee members. Thank you. So at that, with that being said, is there any other discussion?
Mayor, I just need some clarity of what we're going here. So are you commissioning staff to go forward with something, or do you want to apply some conditions that you want certain type of people on this group? You know, if, if that's what you want, we really need to know that before they start trying to, to appoint people that you're recommending or whatever.
Right, so the, the, the motion would need to be amended to include those.
Those require, require people, types, positions.
Whatever the, whatever the.
Yeah, whatever you want.
Or you can table it.
I think at a bare minimum, it should follow the ordinance that's already there.
So when you say the ordinance, the, the ordinance.
So you, so Chapter 2 of the city ordinance spells out how boards and commissions are to be established, and it talks about two-year terms, it talks about appointments, residency requirements. This is all, this is all spelled out in terms of how boards and commissions are, are to be established. But again, with this being an ad hoc committee.
Right.
That was the, that was the concept.
It's not a board.
Yeah. Having said that, if you wanted to set it up as some, similar to this, you could, but.
Mayor?
Councilmember Gittes.
You know, it's being phrased as an ad hoc committee. The last time we did an ad hoc committee was before I was even on city council, and it kind of seems at that point, we moved a little bit away from what the ordinance said and were not true to the spirit of the ordinance in, in the way we were giving appointment power to the council members and the mayor at that time. This, this is an important, important committee, and I don't know if it needs to be more formalized in the way of an ordinance change and make it a, a standing board, or if it, which, which would require perhaps an election, but we have to do something before October 31st, I get it. I, I, I think I would kind of defer to the recommendations of staff on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the comment Councilman Gittes just made, I guess my concern is, is, and I don't want to, I know everybody on this council would make good decisions on this, but from what I understood, Mr. Boone was saying, it sounds like he's the one putting the list of people together. Is there anything pressing on why we got to vote on this today?
I don't think, Mr. Boone.
Right. I mean, it, it sounds like this needs probably further discussion, and it may be ripe for a work session, or, you know, us discuss it individually with the manager as to how, you know, again, different preferences, but again, we have a little time.
I want to clarify what Councilmember Neal just said. Do you have a list?
I, we have a draft slate list that we would present to y'all, but again, y'all would make, the council would make the final decision.
Because each council member will appoint one member according to the item.
Yes, sir.
So what are you, so you're saying that you have a recommendation list for us to appoint from?
We just have a recommendation list that we suggest that you would consider, but it's just, it's a starting point, right? So that yourself and the other council would, would ultimately make the decision. It's just a starting point.
I will tell you, though, since people looked at the agenda on Friday, I've been getting phone calls, so the list isn't a problem.
Good question.
Councilmember Philshar, Mayor Protim Durio, then Councilmember Turner.
Chris, is it true that just to satisfy the time constraint that we're under the contract that we're addressing, cannot, can't we pass this today, trusting each council member to appoint the right person? It's an ad hoc, it may be temporary, and then at a later date, after we've had time to really sit down and consider this, we can move to the next level as we're discussing about the ordinance and, and, and forming a true committee as, as, as being discussed?
Yes, sir.
So again, council, my, my recommendation would be to do the right thing today as opposed to doing it the right way. Let's get this done, let's get beyond this, and later, if we'd like to make it a more permanent committee, that's fine, but for today, it's an ad hoc temporary. Thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney.
So I would caution council not to just do something hastily. We want, we definitely want to be in compliance with the contract, but there's time. My fear is that if we do something and then try to make changes to it later, that that might be some, cause some problems down the road in saying that we didn't act in good faith. So we're proposing it as an ad hoc committee. I, I think it, like, as Councilman Philshar mentioned, if it's something that we decide needs to be permanent, and we want to merge it with some existing organizations or boards that we have in the city, or expand some existing boards, authority in the city, that's something we can do, but we definitely want to make sure that this particular committee is established with the intent to comply both with what the city desires, but also with that contractual term in which we negotiated.
Sheree, you said earlier, we could vote on this today, and then it will come back before us after, I guess, staff had a chance to look at it, or, and you get the feelings about how we want this committee, ad hoc committee, set up, and then we could vote on it as far as the terms of the actual ad hoc committee?
To clarify, I said if you tabled it or decided not to vote on it today, you will see it again, because we do have to, to get it done by a certain timeframe. So you'll see it again relatively quickly.
Okay.
Councilmember Turner.
I mean, to make it easy, I think something that happens often, you know, we talk about these things, and staff doesn't have clear direction. I asked Councilman Neal, you brought it up, so can you just give them some clear direction or suggestions of what you're looking for? So now they're not leaving here, you know, confused on how to bring it back to us.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my...
What can I pause, though, because there is a motion on board to approve it?
It's a motion.
So if, if, in a second, so we're having a discussion, so if there's, if that's, if we're talking about amending the motion, or appealing the motion, or tabling the motion, then we have to kind of deal with the motion that is, that is on the floor.
Sheree, I apologize, going back to what you just said. Was you recommending that we slow down on this item? I mean, it sounded to me like you were, as our legal advisor, to maybe table this?
I'm saying if council has concerns, I would prefer council table the motion, so that staff can have a chance to address those concerns, so that it's not just a motion to comply with a condition of a contract term, so that we can truly say that we are adopting this, this ad hoc committee, both in compliance with that contract term, but also in the spirit in which it was intended to do.
But what I said, though, is true, then. This is an ad hoc committee. We each can appoint someone, we can trust each one to do their job, but that doesn't eliminate us from, in the future, of doing anything else.
Absolutely, and I, and I agree with you. I was just restating the fact that if, if council had concerns in terms of how this committee was being formed, that I encourage them to table the motion, so not that it would come back later for us to revise or extend the ordinance, but to just table it so that staff can have, have a chance to address those concerns, so that at the time it was approved, it was approved both in compliance with the contract, but in the spirit in which it was intended, and if later on down the line, council decided that this committee was serving the, the city and the citizens well, and they wanted to either extend its authority, make it a board or commission, or whatever council wanted to do, extend the authority of another board to have, you know, authority over this commission, whatever council wanted to do, we would be in good standing to do that if we did the right thing originally.
Councilmember Samuel.
I'm confused. So I'm asking, is it proper just to, to motion to table this, motion that's on the floor?
So, we haven't adopted Robert's Rules of Order.
I understand.
But according to Robert's Rules of Order, you can't make a motion to table.
So that we don't hurtly move into this, so that we can do it right first time with whatever underlying precept that we are talking about. I move that we table this, and it comes back.
Second.
I have a question. So we have a motion and a second.
So...
Do we want to take a vote on that, and it dies on the floor, and then he amend, or how do you want?
We have a motion to table.
Because we have one sitting out there.
We don't have, we haven't adopted Robert's Rules of Order.
Right.
And so that's why I said, under Robert's, you could make a motion, but under the city's rules, either whoever made the motion would have to withdraw that motion, and then we can go with their motion to table, or the motion can just die.
Okay.
Somebody can repeal their second, it'd die for lack of second, or it can just die because it doesn't pass it. That's kind of the mix that we're in. But it sounds like it's the will of the council to table, so...
Yes.
Is everyone okay with the motion to table?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. You're okay?
So we had a motion by Councilmember Samuel to table?
Yes.
And a who's second?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Okay.
I think it was Taylor who actually spoke up first.
Okay.
And I would just ask that if there, there is some concerns, that those council members just kind of email those to the city manager, so that we can, can do that. Because I know that there were a lot of things that were, that were mentioned.
Will do. Thank you.
Wait, yeah, the motion to table, is that for an indefinite time, or is that for a specific time?
Absolutely not, sir. We, we're on a time, we're on a deadline. So it's just tabled, so, so you don't vote on it today, but...
Well, that's, that's, see, I attended this parliamentary procedure thing that you set up, and it says you can't, you don't just put a motion to table out there, you have to do it either indefinitely or for a specific time.
I still move to table until next week.
Thank you.
We came, we have the 27th.
Twenty seven.
I would just like to remind council, as Councilman Turner said, to get your input to staff, so they're not confused as to what we want. Get it to the city manager. Get your input to Mr. Williams, so when they come back next week, they'll have everything on there ready for us to vote on, or at the next meeting.
And I'd like to remind council, we haven't adopted Robert's Rules of Order, but Councilman Gitts is correct, but it's in the will of the council to, we would like to get it back to you way before it's actually needed to be effective, so you'll see it.
Okay, thank you. This is city manager. May I have the reading for the caption of the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. Counselor, conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution adopting the reinvestment zone tax abatement policy for the city of Beaumont. I understand this is an annual deal, and it is time to, to re-adopt it by council.
I will now open the floor for the public hearing. Do you have anyone that would like to speak on it?
No, ma'am, I don't have any at this time.
Okay, there's no one that would like to speak on it, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And may I have a motion, please?
You need to read the cap.
I'm sorry. Will you read item number 11, please?
I think that was 11 I read.
Okay, that is, that is item number 11, okay? Is, is there a motion for, for approving of item number 11? May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Gitts.
So I'm looking at the following types of enterprises that are eligible for, to apply for tax abatement. Is there ever been any consideration to increasing the types of enterprises eligible for tax abatement? There might be things that we want to consider bringing to the city that would have a tax abatement that's not on this list. I guess that's from Mr. Boone.
Okay, so this, what's proposed is the tax, reinvestment zone tax abatement policy that we've had for many years. It's, we've, we've tried to keep it in line with what the county offers, and so the proposed uses as set forth, you know, typically are impetrochemical, because again, this is our industrial. But to answer your question, we've had no recent discussion as to perhaps expanding this list, but it could be possible in the future. You could even amend the policy at any point in the future. Again, the reason it's back before you today is it's required to be reestablished every two years.
Councilmember Turner?
Well, I can speak for myself. I would be in favor of diversifying, you know, I understand with the economy, we're talking about generating more revenue today, and we're still kind of strapped on what we're targeting, so I would be in favor of diversifying and kind of opening it up a little bit more.
Okay. And I will say that when we've had some uses that may be a little bit outside, we have looked at 380s as potential, because this, this is essentially an incremental tax abatement for industrial uses. Having said that, it, potentially it could be expanded, but in the past, we've looked at those in, in the light of 380, which is also another option.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our agenda. But at this time, it is now time for public comment. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. Please adhere to the three minutes. The green light will come on when it's time for you to speak. The red light will come on at the end of your three minutes. Thank you.
Charlie Crabb, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, Mayor. Council, this has been a very good afternoon, very interesting. And yes, I guess it, it was long, but just a comment on, on resurfacing streets. I think we, we need to do as needed. We need to look at the usage of our streets and, and overlay them with this asphalt. That makes a very nice street when you, when you get to drive over an asphalt-coated street. And I guess the parks, yeah, I'd like to see the enhanced parks where people will use them. I've seen a lot of usage on these basketball courts and tennis courts. I think we, we probably have adequate tennis courts, but you might think of, of how people are using it and just enhance it, put, give them more, more things. Okay, on the roads, I guess you, you use a mileage, see the usage of the roads, because I've seen roads resurfacing, and I didn't think they really needed it. But some, something happened. And anyway, I enjoyed the meeting, and I hope to see you all again.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good mayor, council, new city manager, and legal. I just made some notes this time. Usually I come up here and just go random, but this is what I want you to hear from me as a citizen. The tax rate increased, and citizens have to shoulder the tax hike. Okay, that's okay, but there should be some, some drawback, because when the $3 million building was built, I wonder if the bond ramifications were considered at that time, and if the $3 million is given back, is that going to be part of going into the water fund? But nevertheless, I'm an airport advocate, well, maybe not an advocate, right? But anyway, that looks like there's $4 million that's going to go to a tea hanger and 11,000 square foot facility for private planes. That's a lot of money for a project where we still have brown water, okay? So the stipend for $1,000 raised for the non-civilian employees, is that considered in this budget where it won't have to be a stipend, but it'll have to be a raise? And then I was looking at, listening to you about the street repairs, and it was said that it's distributed among the wards. What about distribution on a historical database, you know, looking at the older streets and moving forward, whether it's fair or unfair, but, you know, it's been a long time coming? And then in the RFP for, just wanted to know if the city officials know what you really want, because an RFP can be done quickly, and we can get this money back. And then with trash pickup, last year, I asked that the trash employees would be able to have MLK Day off. That was the whole gist, you know, of MLK fighting for the employees that, that were handling the trash. They still work on MLK Day. Why? We have industries, they're getting abatements, so why don't we just increase on their abatements rather than the city? I'm a senior citizen. I applied for the water discount last year, still haven't gotten it, okay? So I'm so glad that council is looking at that. You know, we need it. We are going to have to pay more money for water, and you're talking about in, everything going up, medicine, all those kind of things. I don't take any yet, but I'm sure I will soon. But bottom line is, we need to consider that. Eight percent is too much. So thank you for listening to me, and thank you for serving. God bless you.
Thank you.
Stephen Watson, 1070 Brandywine, Beaumont, Texas.
It's been a long day, so I'm going to cede my time to the other speakers, and I want to welcome you to Beaumont, and may God bless and counsel you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Luther Holmes, 930 Calder, on number 210, Beaumont, Texas.
First of all, I'd like to commend the council for your services, and of course, Mayor Mouton, who I consider one of the best mayors in Texas. On 9/822, at the time, 2350, I was pulled over at Gladys and MLK and Park. In parking lot on Old Riley Auto Park, I was asked to show proof of license and insurance. I complied. I was told I alleged didn't stop at a stop sign, nor use a turn signal. Instead of being given citation, I was asked, me and my passengers, to step out of the car and put my hands upon the cop car, then was asked to search my vehicle. I said no. According to the law of Texas, they had to have probable cause that they make search my vehicle, and of, of evidence of a crime, and they didn't have any probable cause. Six officers proceeded anyway, calling dogs to sniff my, sniff my car. At the same time, we were searched down from head to toe without our permission, being humiliated rather of our dignity from the search, asked all sorts of derogatory questions. I fear for our lives surrounded by six police, all white, which do not reflect the populace of this city, being 48.5% black and other percentages of other ethnic groups that generate more fear. According to the U.S. Constitution, taxation without representation is illegal, certainly without doubt in this, in this city, it exists. After the search, there was found no narcotics. Then the officer made a sarcastic remark that, that we found a brick, which I didn't think was so funny at all, gave me a citation, and let us go. When we, when we, when we'll just stop, I have evidence here that shows that this has happened over and over again with me. They didn't even, they didn't even have an incident report on file when I went to get one. I obtained more detailed information from a judge. I'm 66 years old and tired of being harassed by, by Beaumont police for no justifiable reason. This type of oppression has to stop, not only with me, but with all citizens of this great city. Just because you give someone a ticket, you don't have a right. I'm going to say this...
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Paul, 5615 Phelps Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello there. Hello, everyone. Excuse me. I come to speak today because I'm a new owner. I bought some property at Fourth and Harriet, and Fourth and Fennett Road. It's the southwest corner. It's in Mr. Duryo's ward. I grew up in Beaumont, Texas. I was born in Tripe City, Midway. But anyway, I might sound like a baby with pampers on his feet, but I'm coming to see about, like, community development. I want to try to help out the, the city. You know, we're trying to revitalize, but it seem like the south side don't get revolatized. So I'm thinking with that corner right there... So I'm thinking with that corner right there, I went to the, we told me to go talk to the planning and zoning. And I gave him some ideas I was thinking about. Since Beaumont is supposed to be the athletic city, NFL capital, I thought about a little sports museum there where we can show different athletes from our own city. Maybe even get some little cards, like football cards for those guys, basketball, a food truck business, a workout room, daiquiri bar, snow cone, smoke shop, drive-through coffee, tutoring, learning how to handle their finances and get away from them payday loans and those title loan type people. You can also make a hotspot for those teenagers coming through to be doing some whatever kind of work with anybody else in the neighborhood. And maybe art studio, photography, sound booth for people that like to do DJ or maybe do podcasts. I've talked with some people, not talked, but emails and stuff online about possible franchises. I had a Scooters, it's coffee shop, it's in Woodlands and Pearland. Floyd Mayweather has a fitness gym that he's going around different cities. There's also another fitness called Twenty Fit, Fit Twenty. And a cleaners by Jeff the Cleaner. I also said we could probably put a police substation there and try to help the crime in that area. Another little, maybe a basketball court dunking booth or something for the athletes in there. Even get a maybe like a batting cage where the children can use the bat or they can learn to pitch. You also can get a little camera, but a timer where people can run like a twenty-five yard dash and just for fun. But they was telling me, so we went to the cheapest because most of these is gonna be some big money. And I'm not a six-figure or seven-figure type guy. I'm a four-figure. But anyway, they told me you had to get the sidewalks and landscaping. And I'm saying, I'm not a big corporation. Seem like individual, I wouldn't need that, a sidewalk. Let me get it started, maybe get one or two food trucks there, healthy food, maybe the greasy food. Just get people started, you know, if they can. And she said you have to do that first. And I think it's, I don't know if it's an ordinance or how y'all go by. But seem like I wouldn't have to do a sidewalk because there's a red light there at Fourth and Fennett. And it's not being kept up, the sidewalk. I don't know if the city or the school just supposed to keep it up. But if I have to put it there and then it's gonna dead end, it's a sidewalk that goes nowhere.
Thank you.
Cheryl Jackson, eight sixty-two Porter Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Welcome, Mr. Williams, to Beaumont, Texas. I am here about the parks, but I can't talk about the park until I talk about my neighborhood, which is the Charlton Pollard neighborhood, South End to most, the original South End. I am very proud to be a resident in that neighborhood. However, we, I can speak for a few of us, I'm tired of my neighborhood being neglected. Number one, the only thing we have in my neighborhood where I pay taxes is a park. A park that we do parties, balloon releases, different things like that, events. I do events in the park. However, I feel like it's not fair that we had a rundown park. Our children deserve a park, I mean, something that's safe. I went to Rogers Park after being called out and noticed that they had two playgrounds. Two, to our one that was rusted out. Our children, our children wants to be safe. We wanna have these events in a park. That is the only thing we have. We have no resource center, no community center. We have absolutely nothing, not even a grocery store. Okay, so we take pride in our park. I take pride in it. We are gonna be doing more and more events there. However, we need some representation. Ed, Oddwin, I'm gonna need you to step up. We need to see you. You are our voice. So I'm calling you out. Mayor, I appreciate what you done over the, about the park. I appreciate that. You saw that it was a safety issue and you shut it down. Thank you. AJ, thank you as well. Our children matters too.
Fred Grant, twenty-four, forty-five Amarillo, Beaumont, Texas.
If you see me streaking out of here, it is because I am a diabetic. I urinate a lot and I'm gonna have a choice. Urinate here or go find me a restroom, okay? I am here to defend the house. What I would like to do is address you as if you were members of the U.S. Supreme Court and you allowed me the opportunity to defend my client. I came home one day from work and I was evicted by the Beaumont City members. I have been crying for help for two years and never got it. I am a veteran and a senior citizen and I am homeless. Now what I'm gonna do is try to establish reasonable doubt why that house should not have been reattacked. I had a whole lot of things I wanted to say, but since I ain't got but three minutes, it's like I done forgot everything I wanted to say. But what I am gonna say is some of the things that were used to reattack the house. To me, it doesn't make sense. The police came out there and arrested the house. The neighbors complained about the property. The neighbors complained about the repairs that were going on. The neighbors complained about people going in and out of the house. Someone declared that the house is unoccupied, ain't nobody lived there in ten years. And I'm saying, where did all this come from? I talked with, I can't even think of that person's name. Okay, and it's like, who declared that no one lives in that house? What authority gives, what's that organization? Well, you know what I'm talking about. What authority gives you the right to tell a person where they don't live? I have been living there since oh-four, ever since I came back from Germany. But now enforcement code is telling me I don't live there. I say, wowee. Where do I live? She said when she decided to reattack the house, the person that was-
Sir, your time is up. Thank you for your service. Hold on. But you could speak to Mr. Boone. Thank you. Proceed, Ms. Bresser.
Christopher Jones, ten forty-five Dusset Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Welcome to Beaumont, Mr. Williams. It's a pleasure to have you here and we look forward to working with you. On behalf of the South End Charlton Pollard Greater Community Association, I do extend our invitation, not only to our members of council and our mayor, but also to our community. We are excited about reformulating and reconstituting our neighborhood association, historically known as the Charlton Pollard Neighborhood Association. We're in the process of reclaiming our name, which is the South End. So we're not South Park, we're the South End. And historically written, we want to, like I said, reclaim our name and reclaim the status and historical status to the South End. We will be meeting this evening at six-thirty at the American Legion in the South End. It's on Park Street that's in the South End or Pennsylvania that's in the South End. And so like we, again, we extend a warm welcome to you all and hopefully that we can participate one with each other. So thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Fennell, he didn't provide an address, Mayor, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I know we have a lot of things going on in the city. A lot of people addressing a lot of the issues. You've seen me here before throughout the year. And it hadn't always been nice, some of the things that I have to address and some of the things that I had to say. I don't know, based on your criteria, you're not acknowledging my situation as a city problem, but it actually is when we're dealing with things that affect the community and people within the community. I am an advocate and I am dedicating my entire life to make sure that the judicial system in Beaumont is fair to everyone. Right now, I'm dealing with judicial misconduct. I'm dealing with judicial corruption, which is a crime. Paperwork, audio, video information has been withheld from me. I am reaching out to various industries and various situations and various things. And like I said before, hopefully by years end, I'll have that information and that material for everyone to view in the city and within the surrounding area. We're coming along very well. The information I have is very detailed, it's thorough, and it will probably take about a year and a half, two hours per week to get all the information out because it's a lot of it. And it's shameful. I'm sorry that the city would have to go through this, but our entities within our city has left us no choice. So I'm not quite sure if you guys are that interested as the city council, but I know that the city itself is interested because this is our city. And it doesn't belong to us, it belongs to others. We see your judge friends. We see your corporations within these businesses, the conflict of interest, the dark money. And we just hope we gonna be able to bring an end to it. I'm not gonna take your full three minutes, but I will readdress the city council and hopefully the people in the city with that information, get ready to roll out. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Guidry, twenty-eight, thirty St. James, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, my name is John Guidry. And you're the new manager? I would hope you brought some good eyes for Beaumont where they could start changing.
Mr. Guidry, could you come up to the mic? Yeah, we can't hear you.
Okay. I wanted you to see if you could, everything is going up. They ain't got no programs to cut nothing back. They wanna go full forward to revitalize the Riverwalk. They wanna revitalize this and that. They're not cutting back because, you know, like y'all been saying about the post-senior citizen? Look here, I only get two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. If it wouldn't be for God on my side to keep me living in my mother's house, I would be in trouble. So why don't y'all put on the program to start cutting back on some of the programs like the park and Julia Rogers and the Jefferson Theater? Cut back for people can live. Because y'all going up eight percent and I'm living on two seventy-five a month. So I said, behind the world, I'm gonna make it if y'all keep going up because y'all can't keep y'all budget. That's what y'all, that's what you supposed to be, a budget director? So they've been in business a hundred years and they still can't even qualify for a loan. It don't make sense. They get this many million dollars coming in, but ain't nobody, they must be mismanaging it because nobody has the money to keep up with Beaumont. So if you're the new manager, you might wanna tell these people here, look here, I'm gonna manage it this way, we're gonna cut this program. We're trying to revitalize Beaumont. But you can't revitalize Beaumont because it's dead. You gotta set back, save your money, and then you can move on. But they just wanna keep spend, 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 this organization, that organization. So what kind of program could I, do y'all have to cut back? For y'all won't have to go up on the water bill. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Terry. All I have is a Robert, no address. I don't know what his last name is.
Robert, could you please state your name, please?
My name is Robert Benoit, judge, I mean, mayor and councilman. Good afternoon. I'm speaking on Beaumont Police Department. Between December twenty-fourth and February third, they kicked my door in thirty-five times without no search warrant or anything, roughed me up and everything. I'm a disabled veteran and veteran with the state. And they locked me up for nine months on a sexual assault charge that I never did and they ended up dropping the charges. But I lost nine months of my life incarcerated behind the Beaumont Police Department. The Beaumont Police Department reattacked, had one of my houses reattacked and had it towed down and found my truck, couldn't get my truck back out or anything. They are out of control. Then they wanna know why I'm sweating and they got guns all around me and stuff in my house when they had no search warrant or anything. Then they walking down my street with guns and everything else, just threatening my neighborhood. And I ain't do anything, nothing, just sitting in my house. And I had three roommates living there and they harassing all of us. And they are out of control. That's all I can say. Beaumont Police Department is out of control. And I would like something done about that because I'm terrified right now. I'm terrified. I did five, I did eleven years in the military. I don't deserve all this. I had five MOSs. I don't deserve this here from the Beaumont Police Department. Thank you. Thank y'all. I'm through with this.
Thank you, sir.
Christopher Matthews, thirty-eight, seventy-five North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, city council, Madam Mayor. First, I wanna start off with a welcome to Beaumont, city manager. Thank you for coming here. Excited to see what you can bring to Beaumont. The water bill issue, that's kinda, that's a tough one. But I hear what the older citizens of Beaumont are saying. And I believe the CFO made mention of at eight percent, go up roughly like six dollars or something. And which with me, that's fine with me. I don't mind paying an extra six dollars. I wouldn't mind paying an extra twenty dollars to give the citizens of, senior citizens of Beaumont an extra discount. So that may be an idea or some, along those lines or something like that that you guys could maybe consider. Councilmember Ward Two. You did say that you would bring your grandkids to Charlton Pollard Park and let them play. I'm still waiting to see that and I really wanna see that. And that's, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Holly Peterson, eight twenty-five Norwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
I would not feel right sitting and listening to the comments about Charlton Pollard Park and come and ask in a place of privilege for a dog park at Rogers. So I just wanted to come out and be very clear. I'm grateful that you passed a resolution or a budget for improvements across the board. And I also wanna say that I do live in Ward Two, but I'm a citizen at large. I use all the parks in Beaumont. I see problems and I see wonderful things. I think it's a great amenity in our community. I think it attracts people to our community. I think it's worth investing in. But I would also like to lend my support for all the parks of Beaumont. I would like every child in our community to feel like a citizen at large and feel like they can go to their neighborhood park or they can go to any park in Beaumont and enjoy our city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Latasha, and I don't have an address or a last name, Mayor. Latasha, and I don't have an address or a last name, Mayor.
Can you please state your name at the podium? Thank you.
Latasha, and I prefer not to say my last name due to safety reasons. I just want to reiterate on some issues I've been dealing with with a corrupt judge, and I don't have to say his name, and also some corrupt attorneys. They're trying to storm me for hundreds of thousands of dollars on a simple insurance claim that they, as the judge stated, they're gonna make my situation worse. I'm gonna quote these court transcripts, at least this one page, and this is the judge himself saying this. First, they started off talking about this gag order to try to prevent me from going public with my story. And then the judge goes, "I'm not going to do that. We have a potential to make this worse, you know? You already mentioned what's going on nationally." And what he's referring to is what I said in my complaint letter with the state bar, where I stated that I was gonna go public with my story if they failed to take action against Michael Lindsay.
Ma'am, don't call any names.
I think what's being done is not gonna make things better, it's going to make things worse. And I'm afraid that we might have to do that with this situation here, like I was classically taught. And I thought all lawyers, I'm beginning to wonder what's being taught after I went to law school. But the cure for free speech you disagree with is more speech, not less. So I am just inclined not to do the gag order, and I don't even like the sound of that term, but I don't blame you for using it. I knew what you meant. There's just so many layers to this whole fraudulent scheme case I have. I've been having to step outside of this area just to do some rallying, to try to get some help. And I've been talking to different news outlets that's been interviewing me with no problem and posting my content on their social media platforms because, like, they're saying this judge needs to be exposed for what he's doing. And, I mean, Beaumont has a lot of corruption going on, and I've talked to three other people that's dealing with the same issues. And, um, something has to be done about this. I mean, I have the coverages on my insurance policy. Uh, my insurance company, who was former, they did pay the appraisal award on my claim, but this judge is holding my funds, trying to force me to do arbitration with this attorney, who is Michael Lindsay, and holding my funds until I agreed to pay him sixteen thousand dollars for one month of doing practically nothing on my case. They're saying my funds supposedly, they're, they're in a, um, register of the court. My lawyer, who I just recently terminated, Eric Dick at the Dick Law Firm, he's claiming-
Ma'am, can you please not call any names?
Well, there's not been an issue calling out the names elsewhere. So I don't think it would be a problem here. But, um, something really needs to be done about this judicial misconduct for this area. That's all I have.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we will, um, have comments from, uh, council. I'm gonna start with you, Councilmember Neil. Thank you. Councilmember Samuel?
No comment.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Just simply, Mr. Williams, welcome to the dais, and Councilman Turner, happy birthday.
Councilmember Durya, Mayor Protim Durya, I'm sorry.
Happy birthday, little brother. I was glad I got to spend Saturday with him, uh, playing golf, and he actually didn't do too bad. And, uh, also, I want to congratulate you, Mayor, on your State of the City address. You did an outstanding job. Uh, you got a lot of good information out there, and it was really an outstanding event. I was also, uh, went to the nine-eleven luncheon at the, uh, Rockin' Ave for a lot of veterans there in American Legion was there, and I'm a member of American Legion, and it was really a, a good turnout. And I just want to say, uh, when you paying attention to the budget, if you, a lot of y'all looked at the budget, anything that says for consideration has not been funded. It just says it's for consideration. I mean, peop- that's something that somebody wants, but it has not been funded, and it's not official, it's not hap- we have not paid for that, and it's not happening at this particular time. Just, if it's under for consideration, then it's just that, for consideration. And, uh, the decisions that we made today is what we were elected to do, is hard decisions. Nobody wants to come up here and raise the water bill. We don't want to raise taxes. We don't want to do any of that, but it comes with the job. It's, it's part of this job is to make those hard decisions for the citizens of Beaumont and for the city of Beaumont. So we don't go into default or anything like that, and we have to look ahead for our future. And that's just part of what we were elected to do. It's not something that's pretty. Uh, we all, everybody up here, not just Utah, but all of us will end up being the bad guy. But that's, that's just what it takes, that's part of the job. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Councilmember Getz?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, happy birthday, Councilmember Turner. I was at Westbrook High School this morning, and the reason I was there was because of a, a series of fights that have been occurring over there, including one particularly brutal one last week. Uh, I was met there by the superintendent, by one of the board members and principal. We walked around campus, uh, they have implemented a plan to monitor the bathrooms. Uh, I hope that they follow through with that. Uh, you, you know, right now, they're using coaches to monitor the bathrooms. I think they need to go further than that. You know, they employ both BISD police, City of Beaumont police, and, uh, BISD, uh, public safety officers. They probably need to employ more public safety officers because right now, when coaches are monitoring the bathrooms, if they get called away to an athletic meeting or something like that, you know, the bathrooms might be unmonitored. You know, there's cameras in the hallways, and there's a lot of, uh, eyes out there in the hallways. But in the bathrooms, of course, there's no cameras. So, a lot of bad things can happen in the bathroom at, at the high school. Need to have somebody out there at the doors making sure that these types of things aren't going on in the bathrooms. There is a school board meeting Thursday night. I plan on being there and talking to the school board about this further. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
So I was watching the news with my grandma a few, a few weeks ago, and I seen an issue come up that was in Jackson, Mississippi. A horrible issue with brown water, and I'm talking about pouring out like mud out of the faucet. But the mayor who was actually being interviewed on ABC News, he mentioned that our mayor in Beaumont, Texas, was one of the first people to reach out to him and send him a eighteen-wheeler, eighteen-wheeler full of water. So I want to say that publicly, that I was watching the news and I seen it, and I appreciate you, Mayor. I like the fact that Beaumont look good in the positive light. Uh, we have Tesla charging stations, uh, it's new to the area. It's right across from Popod's out there in Walden Road. We have a lot of electric vehicles, so I want the community to know that if you have a friend or know somebody that drives one, it's available now in that area, and we're moving in a progressive direction. Uh, I want to thank staff for a possible solution that we've been going through with the bidding process. I thank y'all for getting creative and putting y'all heads together and getting proactive, so I appreciate it. And to the Charlton Pollard Neighborhood, we heard y'all, we answered y'all, and thank y'all for speaking up, okay? And last but not least, uh, NWAACP got a golf tournament on ten-one. I, I, I'm getting a fever, I got a little better this weekend, so I'm ready to go again. So, we gotta get Audwin to come play with me and Chris and see how I do against Audwin. But other than that, thank y'all for hanging in there. I know it's a long meeting, and I'm excited to get next door, and welcome, Mr. Williams, again, to the city of Beaumont.
Okay, um, city attorney? City clerk?
Thank you.
Our city financial officer? Chris? And Bart? Okay, and Mr. City Manager?
I'll spoil it, since it's my party. I just want to congratulate this city council and staff on passing a budget. It's one of the biggest things that you do, one of the most important things you do in a year, so I just want to congratulate you and get it done and acknowledge Todd and his staff for the work, this tremendous work they put together. We just see some of the stuff that's done and putting together a budget, but congratulations to you and your staff and all of city staff in getting that done. Couple of quick notes, uh, things coming up to you pretty soon. I'm gonna be coming to talk to you about RFQ for strategic plan for the city. This is state of citywide strategic plan. Uh, also salary survey, RFQ for sal- salary survey. And then some things as far as organization and staffing. So, got here, we get, I have a lot of things going, but we'll start pushing some things your way for you to talk about and consider. That's all I have. Thank you, and happy birthday, Councilmember.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I would like to say, uh, congratulations on your first meeting, being here on the dais with us. And, uh, we're forty minutes late for a reception that was supposed to start at four-thirty, but again, we were ta- taking care of business. Um, I want to also, um, say to all of our veterans, all of, um, nine-eleven, don't ever, I don't ever want to forget nine-eleven. Um, in addition to that, uh, thank you, happy birthday to you. Enjoyed, uh, on Sunday, and, um, thank you for mentioning, uh, the CBS, um, spot on the news. And, uh, any opportunity that I have to show Beaumont in a good light, I will always do that. I'm a representative of the city elected by the people of Beaumont, and I will always do what's best to make sure that Beaumont is seen in the best light. So thank you for that. Also, um, to the Charlton Pollard Neighborhood Association, you have my guarantee that I will always put safety first, not only for Charlton Pollard, but for every citizen in this, in the city. Um, I'm sorry that it was even, um, it was brought to the attention, and it was, uh, a lack of attention, and hopefully that has been addressed, and it will not happen again. But for the most part, I will tell you, we have a great staff. Uh, everyone's tried to stay on top of everything, and unfortunately, the ball was dropped on that, but hopefully it will not happen again. Uh, in addition to that, um, I had a ninety-five-year-old woman, uh, at Sam's that tried to get out of her car on her walker to greet and meet me. She said she didn't think she would ever, ever see me. She looked over, I was putting gas in my vehicle, and she said, "It's the mayor." And her name was Mary Arredondo, and I told her that I would make an announcement. She was so gracious to want to get out of the car to speak to me, and I told her I was so honored. I told her, "Please do not get out of the car. Uh, you're ninety-five years old," and so, um, just wanted to say that I was so honored that she just even wanted to get out of the car to even speak to me. So that was a, a honor for me. Uh, in addition to that, on Saturday, September seventeen, at forty-three ninety Fannett Road from nine to one, there is a NACA, uh, which is, um, National Association Corporation of America, uh, homeowner workshop that is free. It's a one-stop event that will allow home renters, home buyers to apply for new housing in this area. So please come out, it's a free workshop. Uh, you can go online to NACA, N-A-C-A, uh, to do a pre-registration. So, uh, if you're looking for new homeownership, please come out on Saturday from nine to one. Thank you so very much. We're gonna go ahead and recess to the reception next door, uh, to meet and greet our new city manager, and thank you for coming, and go out and spread the love. Thank you.